Thrilling night of town meeting.
I've got a couple of the announcements from yesterday, just kind of the housekeeping announcements. The first thing I want to announce to everybody is, in the interest of getting things finished up, we have a little bit more pressure on us, it's that we cannot come back here. If for whatever reason we didn't finish this evening, we cannot come back on Thursday. The school has an event planned in this room, so as most of you will know, 10:30 we can opt to go and suspend the rules and go to finish town meeting. We will be finishing town meeting tonight from Hell High Water because we can't find another home to come back to, so just be ready for it. We have the call of the meeting to order, it's return of service by the town clerk. Again, look where your exits are, because it may not be the way you came in. Sound system, everybody all good? Everybody can hear me okay? There's a few, there's a few town employees that are going to be in the audience that are non-residents, I'll announce those shortly. I do not have a list of outside guests, but if there are any, they're going to be in that back left section. Terry Wedding?
Yep, she's running right now.
Okay. And I believe at this point in time you know who's at the front of the, front of the house. And again, I will remind you that you should look at Rule 7, 9, 11, and 14 in the front of the warrant for town meeting rules and moving the question. If somebody chooses to move the question, and I accept that motion, then we will go to a vote on the motion, and then if that is successful, we will just go to a vote on the article and be done with debate. So, that being said, the non-resident town employees that are going to be on the, in the audience, and we're going to give a vote to allow them to remain with their boards, Mike Seal from the Conservation, Mike Dumeo, Harbor Master, Jay McGillis, IT, Robert Matthews Forte, IT, Meg LeMay, Town Accountant, and Elaine Fiore from the Assessors Office. All those in favor of allowing them to remain on the floor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that that passes. And we're going to add Carol Hamilton to the list, and she just walked in the door, so Carol's also in the list. We are going to start off, oh, and these are the counters, so from Section 1, Barb Carney, she might still be out front. Here she is running in. Section 2, Jeb Deloche. Anne Marie Cicchetti is Section 3. Kevin Robinson is Section 4. And Annie Wedding is Section 5. Okay, we have two visitors, non-registered voters that are also in. They're both working for Marshall Cable Media, Shayla Tran and John Kelleher. Please show, raise your hand if you're good to allow them to stay. Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Let's get the show rolling, we're going to start with Article 12. The Select Board moves that the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Law Chapter 138, Section 12D, allowing a licensee authorized to sell only wines and malt beverages for on-premise consumption to trade in said license for a license to sell all alcoholic beverages for on-site consumption, provided further that all, said all alcoholic beverages license shall not be transferable, but shall be subjected to all regional provisions of Mass General Law Chapter 138, and that the licensee shall pay a reasonable fee for the license and be subject to such other and further rules as may be determined by the Select Board on said traded-in license. And this is being put forth by the Select Board, I believe?
Yes.
Yes. Any presentation on that from the Select Board?
Robert Galvin, Town Council, just want to explain this. This year, the state passed a new law that allows people that hold a wine and malt or beer and wine license for restaurants to allow them, to convert them to full alcoholic beverage licenses without regard to the quota that the town has. It's a measure to improve people's businesses that are hurting, allow them to sell all alcoholic beverages, the licenses can't be transferred. So, it's a temporary approval that the selectman can give in order to sell all alcoholic beverages at a restaurant.
Okay. Advisory Board.
Chris Rollin, 45, Whitford Circle. The Advisory Board voted unanimously to recommend this article for many of the, exactly what Mr. Galvin said, this is a new opportunity for businesses, specifically restaurants, to hold a full liquor license, although it will not be transferful, transferable. So, the Advisory Board believes this is very pro-business and is a positive thing for Marshall, so we recommend.
Okay. There's going to be a majority vote, discussion from the floor, seeing none, I'll go to a vote. Oh, we do have somebody.
Stephen Lonigan, Townway Marshfield. How many businesses will be affected by this? How many beer and wine restaurants are there that will now be serving full liquor licenses?
I can't tell you the exact number, but I know that downtown Don Bravo, the Mexican restaurant that's downtown, was always looking for a full liquor license, they could never get it. And the town, a couple of years ago, at town meeting it approved, petitioning the state legislature for full, three more licenses for restaurants. I don't believe that it has ever been acted on, so what the state did in response to requests like Marshfield's was to create a new provision of the law allowing these temporary full licenses to satisfy the towns that were looking for more liquor licenses.
So, would it be a very limited number of establishments?
I believe it's unlimited. There are not many restaurants that are just beer and wine. There's only a couple, as I can recall. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Seeing no further discussion from the floor, this is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 12, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that Article 12 passes by majority. We're onto Article 30. The Board of Public Works moves that the town vote to authorize the town of Marshfield, acting by and through its Board of Public Works, to take by eminent domain pursuant to applicable law or otherwise except by conveyance or gift, temporary and permanent easements for the purpose of reconstructing, reconstructing the Willow Street Bridge and including reclassifying portions of the town land as shown on a plan prepared by BSC Group dated August 29, 2025, on file with the town clerk, and further to appropriate the sum of $20,600 for the purpose of appraised land damages as listed in a chart set forth in Article 30 of the October 20, 2025 Special Town Meeting Warrant. And as such, other and further sums that are required to complete the acquisition of the easements set forth herein, and to meet this appropriation, transfer the sum of $20,600 from previously authorized Chapter 90 funds. So, DPW, Mr. Ryan.
Ken Ryan, Town Engineer. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for this, for this article. What we're doing is, we're actually doing a redesign for the rehabilitation of the Willow Street Bridge, which is in need of repair. So, in order to build the new bridge, we'll have to expand the bridge a tiny bit on each side, and because we'll extend it, we need to take some additional land. So, we're looking for permanent and temporary easements. It's a sum of $20,600 in total, and again, that was from previously authorized Chapter 90 funds.
Okay. Advisory Board opinion, please.
Paul DeCristofaro, 9 George Street. Not much more to add, it's the first step in this project. The easements must be obtained prior to the start of any construction activities to ensure compliance and a smooth process throughout. The Board unanimously approved.
Okay, thank you. So, this is going to be a two-thirds vote because it's an eminent domain article. Go to discussion from the floor.
Malcolm Gale, Nintaskus Street. When you're doing the bridge over again and you widen it, are you also going to be raising it? Or is that not a question for this time?
Can you answer that, or?
I'd have to go back to the design, it does not, I don't believe the bridge is raised at all. It's expanded a little bit to allow more water to flow through, but it's not being raised.
Okay. I just ask that for kayakers and canoes who get up that far, they can't get any farther up towards the, towards where the dam used to be, and it's, it's always a pain in the neck, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Carrier.
Dave Carrier, 34 Outlook Road. And through you, Mr. Moderator, again. Will there be any impact on the water main that was installed about three and a half years, four years ago, that basically proved to be essential for our maintaining water supply, you know, down to the main part of town?
Mr. Ryan.
No, there will not. It's still, the plans for the bridge is to still carry that water main across.
Okay, so it's not going to interfere with the water main in any way?
No.
And I presume it would be improving access if you have to do repairs?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no additional conversation from the floor, go to a vote again, this is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 30, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that that passes by two-thirds. And one after that? Got to make sure I marked on my cheat sheet, so I see how many are left to do when we get done with this. Article 21. The Planning Board moves that the town vote to amend the Marshfield Town Code Division 3 zoning Article 4 use regulations, Chapters 305-5.03, use is subject to other regulations, Subpart D, by modifying the first sentence of 305-5.03D as set forth in Article 16 of the October 20, 2025 Special Town Meeting Warrant, and further that the town clerk be authorized to make clerical, editorial, and other adjustments to effectuate the purposes thereof. And again, this is going to be a two-thirds article because it's a planning board article.
Greg Gaimond, Ice House Lane. I'm the town planner. This article updates the zoning bylaw by correcting the first sentence to reflect that there are two other mixed-use districts allowed in the zoning district. And in your warrant, you'll see the actual text is shown with the blue bold being the new language, and the red strikeout is the letter being removed.
Town Council reminds me that we need to hear the planning board's vote on the articles.
Planning Board voted five to zero in favor.
Okay. And if we can do that for all the other ones coming up, please. Advisory Board.
Vin Falacara, Holly Road. So, for Articles 19, 20, and 21, they're going to reflect very small editorial changes to the town code. None of these changes impact the governance model of the town. So, the Advisory Board voted unanimously to approve all three. Mr. Moderator, you can, you could skip us for the others if you'd like, but our, our recommendation is the same for 19, 20, and 21.
Okay, we'll do so. Thank you. Discussion from the floor, seeing none, I'll go to a vote. Again, two-thirds. All those in favor of Article 21, please raise your hand. All those opposed, Article 21 passes by two-thirds. We're onto Article 1. And any of you old-hand town meeting members know that this is an annual article, this is an article to deal with bills that came in after the budget, so they need to be taken care of in the special to get them off the plate. This is an unusual vote in that it's a nine-tenths vote. The Select Board moves that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $13,574.17 to pay unpaid bills from prior fiscal years, and to meet this appropriation, transfer the sum of $11,856.62 from free cash, the sum of $1,705.57 from the town's water enterprise retained earnings, and the sum of $1.98 from the town's solid waste retained earnings. I think that's pretty self-explanatory, you've got the chart there, you can see where the bills are coming in from. Advisory Board.
Chris Rollin, 45, Whitford Circle. The Advisory Board voted unanimously to recommend this article.
Okay. Again, this is a nine-tenths vote. Discussion from the floor, seeing none, I'm going to go to a vote. All those in favor of Article 1, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that that passes by nine-tenths. On to Article 20. Article 20, the Planning Board moves that the town vote to amend the Marshfield Code Division 3 zoning bylaw, Chapter 305, zoning by deleting all reference to the Housing Partnership each time it appears in said code, and inserting Marshfield Affordable Housing Trust in place thereof, and further that the town clerk be authorized to make any clerical, editorial, or other adjustments to effectuate the purpose herefore.
Greg Gaimond, Ice House Lane. I'm the town planner. As mentioned, this article updates the zoning bylaw by replacing all references to the Housing Partnership, which no longer exists, with the new Affordable Housing Trust. And the Planning Board voted five to zero in favor.
Okay. Advisory Board, we're all good? Okay. Discussion from the floor, I'm assuming Mr. Kelly is getting up there to do that.
Eric Kelly, Piers and Path. Let me cast this, have we eliminated, completely eliminated, the Housing Trust?
Mr. Gaimond?
The Housing Partnership?
Excuse me, Housing Partnership, yes.
Yes, the Housing Partnership had been changed like three years ago, and I believe most of the members of the Housing Partnership are now members of the Housing Trust.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pesavich.
Joe Pesavich, Wilson Road. Yeah, I would take issue with that, Mr. Moderator. I don't believe the Housing Partnership was ever dissolved in any way. It was, it always was and is still on the books. I think there was an attempt to remove it about a, so a year, over a year, a year and a half ago, when they established the Marshall Housing Trust, but the partnership was never actually eliminated. I'd like to have an opinion about that.
It's, it's still in the bylaw, and this article is to get it off the bylaw.
Right, so that's what I, that's my point, is that it hasn't been eliminated. I have a question that maybe the planner can help me with, is, first of all, Mr. Moderator, it's really tough to see that this article is printed the way it is, with just a reference to a change of one term or one organization with another organization. And to really understand what that means, you would have to go through our zoning regulations and look for every place where that, those term, that term Housing Partnership occurs. So, I disagree strongly with the characterization that this is some sort of a housekeeping thing and has no effect on actual governance. I would think the Advisory Board would have looked more closely at that, because I think there are probably many examples where it does affect governance, and it does affect how funds are maybe handled. And does this affect how, I'd like to know if this affects how in lieu of funds are being handled.
If you want to speak to it.
It, it does change several provisions of the zoning bylaw. If you type in, in the zoning bylaw under the searchable term Marshfield Housing Partnership, you can see that it exists several times. If this article passes, the words Marshall Housing Partnership will be eliminated and substituted with the Marshfield Affordable Housing Trust. So, it's, it is readily ascertainable where those changes are, and principally, what the Housing Partnership couldn't do, the Affordable Housing Trust has the authority to do. So, it is literally the successor entity to the Housing Partnership, and it does receive and can hold and invest and spend payment in lieu of affordable housing units.
Well, I'm speaking in opposition to this because it shouldn't be done this way. Marshall Housing Partnership actually had pretty good success in creating affordable housing units. And right now, I'm a member of the Housing Authority, incidentally, and we are in the process of creating a mechanism for creating affordable housing, including constructing small numbers of affordable housing. And actually, the Planning Board should go back and reevaluate this and determine that, especially when it concerns in lieu of funds, that the money should be going to the Marshall Housing Authority and its development entity.
Okay.
So, I'm against this happening, it should be defeated now.
You're out of time, so thank you.
Thank you.
So, seeing no further discussion, it's a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 20, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that that passes by two-thirds. Next up is 28. The Board of Public Works moves that the town vote to amend the Marshfield Town Code Division 2 general bylaws, Chapter 250 Streets and Sidewalks, by adding in a new proposed Article 9. Other prohibitive discharge of water, Chapters, no, Sections 250-28 and 250-29, as set forth in Article 28 of the October 20, 2025 Special Town Meeting Warrant, and further that the town clerk be authorized to make clerical, editorial, and other adjustments to effectuate the purposes herefore. Ms. Jordan.
Hi, Diane Jordan, Chair of Public Works. Okay, so this came up because, well, a lot of reasons, but I had a resident that reached out, their street received water during storms, like many streets do, so it would flow down the water naturally from the storm. But then a neighbor built a berm on their, on their own property to keep the water from their, from their property, but that berm resulted in the water flowing across the street and creating a huge kind of lake at the driveway of somebody else. So, this was an ongoing problem that this resident had, it would freeze in the winter really bad, it was really flooded. The neighbor wouldn't remove the berm. And they did reach out to the building commissioner a few times, but, and he did go there and see the situation, but because the berm is built on a person's property, there's nothing that the town can do about that. So, eventually, they reached out to me, and then what ended up happening with that situation was that the DPW had to go over there and actually fix the road and create a drainage, drainage on the road because it would become a safety hazard. It wasn't just that the road, well, the road was also being kind of destroyed, but the lake freezing was a safety hazard. So, that situation cost the taxpayers of Marshall $5,000 to fix. So, and there's been many other situations where water is being unnaturally displaced or moved or discharged or dumped or in any other way. or moved, or discharged, or dumped, or in any other way. The, there was no bylaw that covered it, because if somebody is doing something on their own property, even if they're dumping water on their own property, there's no way for the town to help manage the flooding that that causes to somebody else. So it's kind of a void in the bylaw, and so this bylaw, we hope, will fix that by allowing enforcement on the person who's causing the flooding. So there might be questions, and if there are, the building commissioner is happy to answer them, he told me, because he knows lots of different examples of this situation.
Advisory Board.
Paul de Cristofaro, George Street. Paul de Cristofaro, George Street. Although the board supports the intent of the article, we voted no on this article due to the way it was written, we felt that it was a little bit subjective and vague, a lot of variables would go into this, and the answers might come out in discussion, but as written, we couldn't vote yes on this article, so we voted no.
So can I respond to that?
Sure.
Okay. There are a lot of variables, as you can see in the article, because there's lots of different ways that water can be directed, discharged, dumped, dispersed. The, my suggestion for any resident who's experiencing something like this is to have pictures of the flooding, and where the water's coming from, and get, you know, like photographic evidence like that, and kind of keep track of it. And then, it does require that the DPW Superintendent and the building commissioner would inspect it and make a determination about what's happening, so they are the experts to determine what's going on. And then, the enforcement piece is meant to solve the situation, because unfortunately, sometimes neighbors don't, sometimes neighbors can be disrespectful to other neighbors, or just, even if it's a mistake, you know, not fix it, but it's, it's not okay to flood out somebody else's property.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. We're going to go to the discussion from the floor, this is going to be a majority vote when we get done. First one.
Bill Fergoli, five sixty-four Summa Street. I direct this to the town council. Does this also apply to the town?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Okay. Woman at the right mic. You.
Mary Beth Conroy, sixteen Linwood Street. I just have a couple of things to say about this. If you're living at a higher elevation than your neighbor, say, up by the Fairview, and you're, it says in here, roof runoff, so if your gutters are running water from your roof from rain, and it's pooling in your neighbor's yard, how are you supposed to divert the water to go up? Water only goes down. It's not going to, you can't divert it to, or if your, if your swimming pool is at the end of the season, and you're, you know, emptying out your swimming pool to close at the, in the winter, and you're at a higher elevation than your neighbor, I don't understand how you can get that to divert from running, it can't, it can't go anywhere else. So if, if you're at a low elevation, it's obviously water is going to pool at the lowest elevation.
Do you have an answer?
Yeah, so with, so probably the building inspector can help answer those questions, but if you're, if you're emptying a swimming pool, I wouldn't think-
Attorney Galvin can help with that.
Oh, okay, yeah, sure.
So, it's true that there's a lot of places in town where water washes downhill, and that's absolutely the case. This bylaw, as I understand it, is intended to prevent the unnatural channeling or diversion of water. So with a roof circumstance, if you have a roof and it's pouring off the roof, you put in a drywell, or you put something that diffuses the water to control the rate of runoff, so it doesn't cause a flooding impact, because not only you, does this bylaw prescribe diverting water, but only those that causes flooding. So you control the rate of runoff, and then you don't flood.
So people would have to put in either a moat around their house, or a French drain, and then are you going to hire additional inspectors? Because every time there's a huge storm, or something's happening, and people put in a complaint, you're going to have to have someone go out and inspect that, and see where the water's coming from, and it's, I just believe it's going to be hard to prove where that's coming from.
To, who, okay, so, well, the building inspector and the DPW Superintendent are in charge of the enforcement, which means the inspection. So, right, in terms of water coming, water coming off of, or out of one property to another, everybody is responsible for their own property. So if, it's an ongoing thing that's flooding another, another neighboring home, it's the homeowner's responsibility to ensure that they're not causing harm to their neighbors. So if, if, if it's, you know, one time, and it's, and you, you know, it's a ton of rain, and everybody's getting flooded in a neighborhood, that's not what this is about. This is about dirt diverting water, or allowing water to flood another property, not storm water where everybody's getting flooded.
I just feel like it's still too subjective to, and the Advisory Board doesn't agree with it, so I don't agree with it either.
And the DPW Superintendent and the building commissioner would be-
It goes through me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Jack Griffin, eighty-nine Bee Street. I owned a house on Foster Avenue, which went through a lot of storms. We had a sump pump, the pump goes off, goes out in the street, goes across the neighborhood. The next guy next to me has his sump pump going, that's the same thing, and then I lived in Marshall Ave for a while, and that would have a, a high water table, and that would pump water out. So anytime you run a sump, you've got a chance of having a violation, and you're going to make a determination on it. I, I say full no on this, thank you.
Okay.
Malcolm Gale, Nantasket Street. When I built my house on Nantasket Street, the town forced me to build higher, and therefore my driveway goes down, it's quite a pitch down to the street level and to the other people's yards. If I was to put in a paved driveway, I'd be creating a swimming pool down there, and I would be held responsible for it? I think this law is too subjective and should not be voted for.
Okay.
Susan Wolf, three seventy-five Union Street. I'd like Attorney Galvin to say whether he thinks that this is the appropriate law, because the Advisory Board has said they do not support it.
Okay.
I don't think it's my call as to whether it's an appropriate bylaw, but I do believe it's legal and enforceable.
Okay, thank you, that's what I want to know.
Matt Pamela, two Missouri Street. I appreciate the intent of this, you know, I want to have good neighbors, I want to be a good neighbor. I have, you know, a lot of concerns, especially when you talk about groundwater with the sump pump. So, you know, if a person has a basement that floods, they have a sump pump, and they pump it out, and usually it ends up in the road. Where it goes after that is beyond most of our control, we can't control which way the road slopes and whatnot, and, you know, unfortunately, a lot of times, that ends up in other yards. In my neighborhood, that ends up in my yard, a lot of my neighbors do that, and I, I get it, they've got basements, they've got to try and keep from flooding and ruining their stuff. You know, if they pump it out just into their, you know, backyard away from the road, well, that water goes right back into their basement. Like, so what is, what's the solution here to pump out their basement and not get fined?
Sean.
Mr. Moore, if I can. I'm Sean Patterson, the DPW Superintendent, and this bylaw is something that I think needs to happen. I don't think it's fair to have, say, for instance, I live on a certain street, and my yard floods out, and I divert the water to my neighbor, say, Mr. Carrier, I don't think he's going to be very happy with me. I don't think it's fair to, to put some, our wa, your water on somebody else's property. It's the same thing with the streets. We can't divert water onto somebody's property. I think that applies to everybody.
That doesn't answer my question at all.
I wasn't trying to answer your question, but if you'd like me to, I will. What's your question?
It's my turn to speak, and I asked a question, so yes, I would like you to answer my question.
Want to redirect the question?
Sure. If I have a basement, and it rains, and I have to sump pump it out, and if the water just goes in my backyard, it ends up back in my basement, and I have no solution. If the water goes into my front yard and into the road, I can't control where it goes. So what is the solution that doesn't flood my basement, and also doesn't get me fined?
It's a drywell. Run your gutters into a drywell, in your yard.
If my basement's flooding, it's because my yard's flooded, the drywall would be flooded.
Then you're going to have to find another way to divert it into the woods or someplace, but I don't think you should drop it on your neighbor's property.
I, I agree that we shouldn't be pumping into neighbors' yard. I, I'm a hundred percent with you.
Okay.
I just, given this, right, if this becomes law, then there's no way for me, or most of my neighbors, who don't have any unbuilt property in our neighborhood, to do anything with our water. So what's the solution that you're giving us? Like, this is, this is a dead end here.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't think that the quest, so your question is about your yard, right, and the street-
My question's about any, any yard in Marshfield.
So, I know, it's, it's an issue.
Yeah, and I get it.
It really is.
I appreciate the intent, I do.
So, so, well, we're not supposed to allow our sump pumps to drain into the street.
Clock, thank you.
So it's, the DPW already has bylaws that don't allow people to drain their sump pumps into the street, so that's just already a bylaw? So any of those situations would be potentially enforceable anyway? When you, when your sump pump drains into your yard, and it, and it's going back into your basement, then there's, unfortunately, we, this town was built on marsh, so it's going to happen. This bylaw is specific to somebody having the water that is on their property move to their neighbor's property and flood their neighbor's property. So there's lots of different ways that that has happened, maybe the building commissioner could come up if he doesn't mind, give some other maybe examples, but, no?
Right, I think, my point being, the water has to go somewhere. If I can't have it in my yard, right, so I, I pump it, I can't have it, right, it's going to end up eventually in the road, and where it goes from the road, I can't control. I don't pave the roads, I don't do-
I understand, so you're, right, because that didn't, wouldn't apply, because you're not moving your water that's going, flooding another person's property. It's going from your yard, and then it's taking its natural course and ending up in the street? That's not what this is about. This is about moving water, displacing water somehow that floods another property, another property, not-
Right.
Moves naturally from your yard to the street.
I'm not worried about my yard. My yard, I'm at the bottom of the hill.
Oh, okay, oh, I'm sorry.
I get flooded by other people, and, but-
Maybe it's just not a, maybe it's just a confusing example.
When I look at this, and it says you can't sump pump, and like, if that floods somebody else's yard, you're responsible, like, we can't control that. Where the water goes afterwards, I mean, like, Mrs. Comer said, the water goes downhill, I can't control where the water goes.
Okay.
The example you gave of the neighbor building a berm, like, I understand, he's trying to protect his yard, the water went into a neighbor's yard, that, that sucks, nobody likes that, but what's he supposed to do? Like, oh, I'll just let my yard get ruined?
Well, nobody-
I just, I don't think this is fully developed, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're out of time, so.
Um, I, I'm-
I think this is a bit of a circular conversation, so I think we're, I think the point's been made, we think we can go on. Mr. Pesavich.
Joe Pesavich, Wilson Road. Yeah, I want to second the thoughts of the preceding speaker, this is, doesn't seem to be a fully developed article, even though town council referred, says that he understands it's meant to prevent movement of water that's, I don't know, got some kind of time limit or recent impact being realized. That's not really clear in this article. It seems to me like people could come under the gun for existing conditions, or conditions that have existed for a very long time, and then all of a sudden be called to task for some water that's coming over onto a neighbor's property. That's not clear in here. What's, what's also not clear is what exactly is meant by flooding impacts. What's also missing is a way of, how does this potential violation get reported, and how does it get investigated? So I, I just think it's, it's basically a good idea, but it's not developed, and I hope that they do develop it and bring it back. So I'd have to vote against it right now, thanks.
Okay.
Steve Locatus, one eighty-four Elm Street. I appreciate that at least there seems to be developing some form of addressing the most egregious problems that might occur in these, in these cases. If you're running a sump pump, and you're putting it into the end of your property, and you're discharging into the road, that's not right. You should be discharging onto your own property, it's got to filter straight down. If it comes back into your yard, that water's accumulating in your property, that's your responsibility. You shouldn't be able to set up pumps, dump it into your neighbor's yard, and flood your neighbors. You're basically creating the problem for your neighbor. It's your responsibility to fix your home, do whatever you have to do to drainage, and do it onto yourself. Now, will this happen in every case prob, um, yes, we have to figure this out, but we should be able to address at least the most egregious, you know, obvious happenings of this kind of thing, because it's, it's too much. I have, I have a number of neighbors that have built their properties, and it's obvious that they've built drains from their washing machines, from their gutters, and I saw them build the house, and they're putting drainage pipes that are like within three feet of the roads. The water basically is leaving their house and going down the street, flooding the street every storm. I, I've tried to bring these cases to the town building commissioner when these buildings were being built, appears as though nothing was done with that, and I think this happens a lot, and I, that's wrong. You shouldn't be able to move that kind of water on your property to, to create a problem for your neighbor, at least in the most obvious terrible situations.
This is meant to deal with those obvious situations, because that was an excellent point. There, nothing was done about it, because there is no bylaw that covers it.
Okay. Again, the discussion goes through me.
Oh, sorry, I keep forgetting.
Mr. Carrier.
Dave Carrier, Outlook Road. And I believe this has already been answered, but I just want to confirm it. You know, the prior regulations required that the discharge lands on your property with as much space as possible before it finds the roadways, and that has remained unchanged, I trust. And secondly, anything that you do with on your own property, to either divert water from an adjacent property coming onto your property, I presume is still legitimate, as long as it doesn't influence into the street. Is that correct?
Ms. Jordan.
Ms. Moderator, I'm sure I understand his question. It, it is not legal to allow your sump pump to drain into the street.
That wasn't the statement. If you do that again, Mr. Carrier.
So, can, can you-
Could you say it again?
Yes. You know, presume it is still a legitimate act for a person with a piece of property, where there may be infringement coming in from an adjacent property, or perhaps from off the street, to build up the berming, or an abutment that tends to keep the water from coming onto his property. That means, you know, if it diverts the adjacent property and goes out into the street, he should not be found at fault, because he's on his own property.
Mr. Moderator, the issue is when a homeowner is changing something on their property that is flooding out another property. So if it's a, the example that I gave at the beginning, where there was, there's water coming down the whole street, it's just groundwater, nobody was being flooded, it's just groundwater coming down the street during storms, but then somebody built a berm, which caused flooding on another property.
Okay.
This is just the best example.
Do you want to, do you want to go in?
So Massachusetts law says that it is unlawful to discharge or channel water onto an abutting property if it causes any more than de minimis harm. So anybody that's experiencing this today could always hire a lawyer, or bring their own case in court, and prevent somebody from causing harm on their property if they're unlawfully diverting water. This was, my understanding, the Board of Public Works effort in order to help those people, so that they wouldn't have to go out and hire a lawyer when there was an obvious problem by the unlawful channeling of water causing flooding impacts. That's all this was.
Ms. George.
Steve Lynch, fifty Central Street. So does that mean that the lawful channeling of water is all right? Like, for instance, in my garage, the Conservation Board required me to put culverts underground full of rock, put the water, excess water from the roof- put the water, excess water from the roof in a pump into that. But at high tide and rain on the street I live on, it overflows because the water table comes up with the tide and if it's raining, and then it flows into the street and then flows into the storm drain which is always filled with rainwater and tidal water at high tide. So what are you supposed to, where are you gonna put it? So is that the lawful discharge?
I, I don't think the law was intended to try to hold back the Atlantic Ocean, Steve, at your property. So I don't think that's what's at all at issue. This is if.
It's not, it's not the Atlantic Ocean, though. This is a culvert that takes water from my roof, roof gutters underground, and, and from a pump that goes into the culvert. It's full of rocks.
If you're flooding your neighbor's property, you have the potential to be a defendant in a lawsuit brought by your neighbor. If you're causing more than de minimis impacts today. This bylaw only says that if you're doing it in an unnatural way and it's causing flooding impacts, the town can fine you until you take care of it. And it only involves circumstances where there's flooding.
So in my case, it's because it's legal, because I was ordered to do it by the Conservation Board, then it's all right?
No, I didn't say that at all.
I'm not gonna vote for this article. Sorry. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Robinson.
Kevin Robinson, 100 Washington Avenue. So, and earlier your speaker asked if this applies to the town as well. Is that accurate? That the town would be fined if they're the one that's putting the water on my property?
Yes.
Okay. So I have a property at 89 Grove Street and it floods continually, so I can now have the town get fined by the town because of this bylaw?
If the bylaw passes, it applies to the town.
Okay. I would vote no on this because it's unclear and it's not finished. Thank you.
We have one last speaker and then we're gonna go to a vote.
I just have a question.
You need to name and, name and address.
Jocelyn Sullivan, T. Rockley. So there is a state law that is regarding this. But have we looked at where we don't like the wording of it or it's vague? Are there other towns, like our surrounding neighboring towns that have a similar bylaw that we can see what theirs is or see what their impact has been from this?
Mr. Moderator, there are other towns that have this issue. The Assistant Town Administrator told me about quite a few from his town. I don't think that they have a bylaw, but the situations were pretty damaging to the homeowners that were receiving the flooding. One example was somebody who had built a garage and their garage was pouring water during rain into their neighbor's garage, which knocked out their entire heating system. So in cases like that, there's a lot of damage. That homeowner, their only recourse is to hire a lawyer. There's nothing that presently that the town can do, Mr. Moderator.
The question was whether there were other bylaws elsewhere that you could review. That was the question.
Not, not that I could find.
Okay.
This is a problem in many towns.
Okay. All right. So we're gonna go to a vote. This is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 28, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that Article 28 fails.
Thank you.
Forty-one?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one. Article 31. Article 31. The Board of Public Works moves at the town vote to appropriate the sum of $200,000 for the purpose of road reconstruction and to meet this appropriation, transfer said funds from free cash and further that said funds be expended by the Superintendent of Public Works under the general direction of the Board of Public Works. Mr. Patterson.
Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, I go for this article every year under Capitol for, this money is used to do emergency repairs and small repairs on roads that are not accepted by the state in Chapter 90. It's the only way we can get some of these roads repaired so that they're passable and safe to drive on. We do the best we can with what we have, so I, this is what I go for every year to try and do that for us.
Okay, thank you. Advisory Board.
Paul DeCristofaro, George Street. Again, what Sean said is right. Every year we do this. Requests are made for road, road construction that don't meet the Chapter 90 funding. So every year, this is on the thing. We, the, the Board proved this, but we did wanna make a side note. This is another item that should go into the operating budget.
And I agree.
Okay, thank you. This is gonna be a majority vote discussion from the floor. Seeing that I'll call for vote. All those in favor of Article 31, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that the article passes. Article 19. The Planning Board moves at the town vote to amend the Marshfield Code, Division 3 zoning bylaw, Chapter 305 zoning by deleting all references to DHCD and/or Department of Housing and Community Development each time it appears in that said code and inserting E O H L C or Executive Office of Housing and Living Communities in place thereof and as the context so permits. And further that the town clerk be authorized to make clerical, editorial and other adjustments to effectuate the purposes hereof. Mr. Gaiman.
Greg Gaiman, Ice House Lane. As mentioned, this is replacing the former DHCD or Department of Housing and Community Development with the Executive Office of Housing and Living Communities everywhere in the bylaw.
Okay. And we heard from Mr. Falek Arab earlier that this was all approved by the, by the.
Planning Board voted five to zero.
Thank you. That the advisory board gave their opinion. So this is going to be a two-thirds vote because it is a Planning Board zoning article. All those in favor of Article 19, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that Article 19 passes with a two-thirds majority. On Article 6, the School Committee moves at the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass Journal Law, Chapter 40, Section 13E to establish a special education reserve fund to be utilized in upcoming fiscal years to pay without further appropriation for unanticipated or unabridged costs of special education and recovery of high school programs, recovery high school programs out of district tuition or transportation, provided further that the balance of such reserve fund shall not exceed 2% of the annual net school spending of the school district and that funds shall only be distributed from the reserve funds after a majority vote of the School Committee and a majority vote of the Select Board. And this was just voted on by the Select Board, so there's no vote on the screen. They were voted, it was voted against two to one. Mr. Miller.
Yes, this is, this is simply an article to set up a reserve fund for special education purposes. This was, this law was enacted in 2016. It's fairly, all our neighboring towns have already established this. We haven't had any, any real reason to establish it to this point. But it's, it's something our interim Town Administrator, Mr. Morin, suggested that he had in other towns. And it's a, it's a good thing just to set up just in case it's needed. The, the limit is only 250,000 per fiscal year. And by law, it, the, the balance cannot exceed 2% of our net school spending, which is just over 1.1 million dollars.
Okay. Advisory Board.
Scott Swain, Bradford Street. The Advisory Board unanimously recommended approval for this. And me personally, I hope that we don't have to use it that often.
Okay. This is gonna be a majority vote. We go to the vote. Where am I from?
Trish Simpson, 32 Colonial. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As both a member of the Select Board and as an educator, I want to emphasize the critical importance of collaboration in our budgeting process, particularly between the School Committee and the Select Board. In many communities, these two bodies work in close partnership to make thoughtful, sustainable financial decisions that honor educational priorities while safeguarding the town's overall fiscal health. Regrettably, that level of collaboration has not been the norm here in Marshfield, and I believe that represents a missed opportunity. Tonight's request for free cash to support special education is a case in point. While I am a strong advocate for education, I also believe we have a responsibility to the taxpayers to ensure that all departments, including our schools, participate in a transparent and coordinated financial planning process. It is a reasonable, it is reasonable to ask, why is this article not included in the school budget? Having worked within educational systems, I've seen where spending can be tightened without compromising quality. And these financially uncertain times, prudence is essential. That begins with open dialogue, shared planning and mutual accountability. It is time to move toward a more unified approach, one that respects the autonomy of the School Committee while embracing our collective responsibility to the town, to the community we serve.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly.
Eric Kelly, Peterson Path. My concern is that this is put on by the School Committee and the School Committee yeah, that wanted to sit down with the Select Board and discuss this. I'm not in favor of this. I think the School Committee should have asked to sit down with the Select Board and discuss this further. I'm not opposed to doing something like this, but there's a big disconnect here, in my opinion, between the School Committee and the Select Board office. I do wanna ask Mr. Miller. What was your discussion with Mr. Town Administrator Morin in regards to this? He told you, he worked this out with you and put it on?
Mr. Moderator, this was simply brought up as a discussion during our previous budget discussions. It actually appeared on the warrant really before I was really aware of it and we were aware of it. So to say it was strictly a School Committee article is false. It really was put on the warrant and we, once we saw it was on the warrant, it was fine. It's simply a reserve fund. I don't even imagine we're ever going to even be able to utilize this reserve fund in our current, in our current state of our budget.
Just to, if I could, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, please.
Pat Sullivan, Superintendent of Marshfield Public Schools. Yes, this was, in my previous district as Superintendent, they had a reserve fund. It was created and only used in emergency situations. This was recommended by the, the town, Acting Town Manager as a, an absolute emergency fund that would stabilize us in the case that we had a situation that's articulated here. This has been around since 2016. Many towns have this. But this was not something that the School Committee recommended necessarily, but it's, it's a very good idea and a fiscally responsible one for the town.
I just wanna say that I appreciate Mr. Morin's help in regards to the circumstances that we're in. But this was not relayed to us by Mr. Morin. I just wanna let everybody know this is the issues that I am, I'm, the Select Board are running into in regards to communications in regards to the operation of the town. I'm still opposed to this because I still believe that the School Committee and the Select Board should sit down with this. And, you know, just judging by Tom's comments, if I have a correct that, they probably won't even use it. They say it's just an emergency fund, so that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Darcy.
Steve Darcy, Temple Road. I just had a few questions, Mr. Moderator, if that's all right.
Please do.
First question would be to clarify a point that was raised earlier. Would it be accurate to say that all this article does is establish this account and that you're not asking for town meeting to certify, to provide any certified free cash to fund the account tonight?
Absolutely correct. If I could, Mr. Moderator.
Okay.
And would it also be accurate to say that the reason this article is on tonight's warrant is because it's a best practice that many communities have already adopted?
That, that is absolutely correct.
And when you're trying to forecast your budget every single year, you know, it's impossible to predict the number of special ed students that you might have year to year and how much those costs could fluctuate. So could you please provide, tell me an example of how those costs could fluctuate year to year depending on the kind of students that you get enrolled who might have a disability or how much, much that cost can range based on how far along they are on the particular spectrum for their disability?
Yes, it can range in the, in the amount of hundreds of thousands of dollars for an individual student who moves into town who has a disability that requires an outer district placement. So it's a, it's a very fluctuating number that we have to attend to. So this particular reserve fund would attend to an emergency situation like that.
So would it be fair to say that any year where the enrollment is higher than you projected or it's a particular student that you get that could be very costly that in theory, the creation of this account would enable you to withdraw from that reserve balance in year that could otherwise potentially blow up your budget?
That's correct. And also we need to be, we need to make sure we attend to the needs of the students. We don't wanna be out of compliance in that.
Thank you. You know, I would just conclude and say that this is a best practice that many of our peers have already adopted. All it does is establish the creation of this account. No money's being asked for tonight. And basically it gives them a reserve to draw into for the years that, you know, it could potentially bust up their budget. So it's a best practice. And I would say that, you know, none of the arguments against this article in terms of advocating to vote no are against the merits of the idea. It's been about communication. So I'm voting based on the merits behind the idea as a best financial practice. And I would say that, you know, we get a draft of the warrant well before it's published and it's published a month before town meeting. So, you know, communication is a two-way street and we have ample time to discuss this. And I think the merits behind this idea are, in this article, are a hundred percent positive. So, thank you.
Mr. Kai, technically, but you guys can duke it out over it.
No, he, Greg Kai, Canal Street. I don't understand the Board of Selectmen, the two people who voted against. I really doubt, the school, the town and, Acting Town Administrator suggested it. The School Committee who oversees the schools is in favor of it to set it up. I know in the, where, where I grew up, they had a situation in the town of Barry where there was a student who had to be transported to like one of the regional schools in Western Mass and there was a huge amount of cost. And I don't see that being any different here when you have emergency situations. I, I think if other communities do it, the costs are real for special education. Anybody can read, read up on the articles on, on the special education costs. And especially with cuts coming from the federal government to special education, I think it's pretty prudent to set this type of fund up. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Ledge.
Steve Lynch, 50th Central Street. So, you know, when departments need money that's, they can't foresee, they come to us for free, for the free cash money and they add it to their budget as they need it. There's no reason to set up an account that if they don't need it, because we know what will happen, they'll be wanting to fill it up all the time. Just like what we used to have, zero budgeting for, you know, for other, other things like maintenance for this facilities management. And then it turned into a million dollars a year. And is the maintenance any better? I don't know. But the school department has lost 1,100 students over the last 14 or 15 years. Their budget still continues to rise at 2% or 3% every year. There's no reason to create a fund if you don't need the money right now. It's just, you know, wanting more money and doing less. There's no reason for it. Thank you.
Mr. Carrier.
Dave Carrier, Outlook Road. I am not against this article and I plan to vote in safe order. But one of the things I wanna suggest is that anytime this occurs and the fund has to be tapped, that there should be a review of the process of how you got there just to make sure that it wasn't something that was foreseeable and could. just to make sure that it wasn't something that was foreseeable and could be cut off. And the reason I say that is from some direct experience with my oldest son, Adam Carrier, who was dyslexic and dysgraphic and attention-deficented, you know, and his special treatment was capable of being taken care of within Governor Winslow Elementary School after we took actions with the rules and regulations of the state to make it happen.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go to a vote. This is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article Six, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that that passes by majority. We're on to 11. The Select Board moves that the town will vote to borrow pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8, or any other enabling authority, the sum of $735,000 for acquisition costs and a sum of money in land purchase expense to enable the town to acquire for affordable housing and/or general municipal purposes a certain parcel of land on Old Colony Lane, Marshville, Mass., consisting of a parcel of land with buildings and improvements there are known as and numbered Ninety-one Old Colony Lane, Marshfield, Plymouth County, Massachusetts, and more particularly shown on the Town of Marshville assessor's maps as parcel K-08-02-01, and containing one acre of land, more or less, and more particularly described and indeed recorded in Plymouth County Registry of Deeds at Book 57561, Page 108, standing in the name of Equitable Development LLC, together with all rights and easements, and subject to all wellrights and easements, and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen, the Select Board, I'm sorry, to accept the deed to the Town of Fee Simple, the deed to the Town of Fee Simple Interest or less said land to be managed by the Select Board, and further to authorize the Select Board to submit on behalf of the Town any and all applications deemed necessary for grants and/or reimbursements from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or the United States under the Self-Help Act, Massachusetts General, L. Chapter 132A, Section 11, and/or any other state or federal programs, including those in aid of said acquisition, and/or any others in any way connected with the scope of this article, and further to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary to effect said purchase, said funds to be expended by the Select Board. And this is gonna be a two-thirds majority vote. Who's gonna present?
So this is the last remaining parcel in the airport zone. If you drive down Old Colony Lane and you know where the airport's small office building is, there's a lot of land on the left right next to the airport building. A portion of the site is improved with a home that is very old, dates back to the 1600s. There's been an addition made on that house. The house hasn't been occupied for a period of years. It was acquired a few years back by a company called Equitable Development. Equitable Development purchased the property for the purposes of redeveloping it. It has submitted an application to the Zoning Board of Appeals for Site Plan Approval to locate a heliport on the property. Earlier this year, the town, through its Airport Commission, took some easements over a portion of this property, very small portion of the property, because the town's main accessway was located and has been located for 60 years on a portion of the site. And one of the hangars that's located in the rear of the property is also located on the very end of the site, and the town has a security perimeter fence that's also encroaching on this land. If you approve this article, the town will borrow the money, acquire the land. It will resolve the lawsuit that Equitable has brought against the town, contesting the taking. The town will then have the option whether to use this property for an affordable housing unit or units or for some other general municipal purpose. The land is to be held under the care and custody of the Select Board. To do anything else with the property would require a two-thirds vote of the town meeting. It solves some problems. It gets this property under control. There don't appear to be any of the properties like this where someone could propose this. The airport district appears to be fairly full, meaning the airport occupies all the other land that's in the airport district other than this property. And that was the basis, I believe, that the Selectmen proceeded to put this on the warrant.
Advisory Board.
Chris Rollin, Forty-five Whitford Circle. Unfortunately, due to scheduling conflicts, the Advisory Board wasn't able to take a vote or recommendation on this article.
Okay. This is gonna be a two-thirds majority when we vote. Just remind everybody. Mr. Griffin.
Jack Griffin, Eighty-nine Beach Street. I understand that the historic part of the house, the Historic Commission had the, what is it, a year delay that they put on it?
Yes, when Equitable Development began its permitting process, they applied for a demolition permit to the Historical Commission. My understanding is they invoked the protections of that act, but the one-year period of time has elapsed. So Equitable would now have the ability to proceed to demolish the historic structure.
Okay, so is that building still able to be lived in? Is that part of the plan, or could that be part of the plan?
I don't think we know exactly what the plan yet is other than we wish to control it for affordable housing and/or some other general municipal purpose and have it under the care and custody of the Select Board. I do believe that with some rehabilitation, that the structure could be reoccupied.
Well, I would like to make a recommendation to the Select Board that we try to keep this building. We don't, seems like we've knocked the houses down from the 1600s, and that's my point. Thank you.
Okay. Left microphone.
Oh, Steve Locatus, One Eighty-four Elm Street. I'm just questioning the price and how that was determined. I mean, I own about an acre of land, and it's valued at $250,000. This has got a house that's not useful, and we're paying $735,000 for this. As previously mentioned, we are getting $53,000 or something close to that for the rental of the entire airport. Somehow, we have to get this, we have to get the money returned to us through fees or something. This seems like a lot. I don't understand how it was valued that much.
So when a town acquires land, it can acquire it based on a few options. One is to have the property appraised. Number two, it can take the average of the last three years' assessed values. This land is actually assessed at $787,000 presently because it has the prospect of commercial use. It's hard to compare the airport land that's already in airport use and its value to this lot because the town subsidizes and the state subsidizes the airport use. And this property, if you took the average of the last three years, has a valuation or potential valuation in the 770 range for the last three years of assessed values. So it's being purchased cheaper than what the town would legally be able to pay for it. And the Selectmen are free to speak for themselves, but the discussion that we've had so far is that it's important that this property not be used as a heliport. We think it would have a significant detriment to that neighborhood that already experiences impacts from the airport. There's already affordable housing on Old Colony Lane. A one-acre site is big enough to have more than one affordable unit. It seems to have worked okay so far. So this is the price that Equitable Development would agree to sell the property for, and it fell within the authorized amount that the town could potentially pay for the property. Actually, it was less than that. So we're acquiring this property because it not only has value as a residential property, but it potentially has value as a commercial property. And the lawsuit that Equitable Development is claiming, they say when the town, by its Airport Commission, took these very small easement areas, it impacted their ability to put the heliport there, but they've nonetheless proceeded to permit that. Their belief is that the property is worth millions of dollars if you can keep two or three helicopters there and fly them in and out. So none of that has been vetted yet by the Zoning Board of Appeals. If this article doesn't pass, that's where we're headed back, and the town will deal with the lawsuit as it comes. But this seemed to be a solution that was not a perfect solution, but was probably the most advantageous to everybody and accomplished what we were looking to accomplish.
Oh, okay. So this is preventing a heliport being put in there? Okay.
Pam Keith, Smoke Hill Ridge. Can I ask what general municipal purposes would be? And is an airport, any type of airport you say, hangars or something like that, is that included as a general municipal purpose, or will we be saying airport purposes?
I think if we were gonna transfer it to airport purpose, that's a very different use than the ordinary understanding of general purposes. The Select Board and discussion with me included that we would use this land most likely for either affordable housing or open space purposes, but we hadn't determined what it would be best used at at this time.
All right. Well, what I'm wondering then is, I assume general municipal purposes could be, you know, a few things, like I'm envisioning there could be a municipal building of some sort or something. So what I'm wondering is, I was thinking that how about an amendment to strike that phrase? Or if we're talking about affordable housing and open space being the two choices, changing that to open space and leaving either just affordable housing or affordable housing in open space? I don't think you should be whispering.
We have to discuss this.
I know, but I don't know why, I don't know why you don't discuss it in public.
I was just speaking to the moderator, and I was telling him that I believe your amendment was probably within the scope of the article.
Okay, so I assume if you just mentioned open space, which I did not realize was on the table, then I was gonna say the amendment would be to strike general municipal purposes, but I would then change that to and/or open space.
So you'd leave general municipal purposes in and/or open space?
No, take general municipal purposes out and change it to open space.
All right, so the amendment is to strike, wanna see the exact words in here. I'm just looking for where the words are so I can say them correctly. We're gonna delete general municipal purposes and replace that with open space. Open space purposes.
Yeah, I'm leaving them, affordable housing, yeah.
So that's the amendment? Is to delete general municipal purposes and replace that with open space purposes.
And can I just state the reason why I'm?
Well, wait, before we get into discussion on the amendment, that's a legal amendment. So we're gonna go to, that's gonna be the, we're gonna amend the language if this passes. So we'll go into discussion now on the amendment.
I just wanna say that I thought affordable housing and general municipal purposes seem very far apart. They don't seem like anything close to the same thing. And so we don't really know what we're getting. And I think the affordable housing, it sounds like that that has been discussed, and that could be a good idea. So I would prefer the affordable housing. And if for some reason that can't be done, then open space would probably be the next best thing and not a general municipal purpose.
Okay. Do we have further discussion on the amendment? Mr. Griffin? No, you're discussing the amendment. Ms. Magley, are you discussing the amendment or the article?
Well, this pertains to the amendment.
This is discussion on that amendment. Are you discussing the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. You can go first then.
Mr. Moderator, is that piece of property all alone by itself, or are there other buildings around it? That's what I would like to know regarding open space.
But is there other, what's around it? That was the question. The airport and the street are what's around it.
Okay, I've been down that street, and I've been around that area. Looks like there, I remember other buildings down there, so I'll just leave that there. Other people can think of it whatever they know.
Okay. Mr. Griffin?
Yeah, I'm a little nervous about the open space because that means you're gonna knock the house down for the most part, unless you can get it moved.
Well, the affordable component is still in there. It's either affordable housing or?
Right, right. So I'm against that motion because of the fact that it becomes open space. Because the historic house would have to be knocked down.
Okay. Further discussion on the amendment?
Hi, David Qualter, Oak Leaf Drive. If we change this to only be used for affordable housing or open space, does that change the funding mechanism? Should the money come from CPC?
No.
No? Why not?
That's gotta be vetted through CPC. That's a whole nother process. So if you're getting, you can't just take money from CPC. You've gotta go through the whole vetting process with CPC.
All right, thanks.
Joe Pesach, Wilson Road. I don't see why you couldn't have some combination of open space and use of the existing building. And I also believe that the back of the lot is contiguous with some areas that are somewhat sensitive. I couldn't give you the exact classification, but having worked a lot in that area on some matters, I believe it is contiguous with some other open space, and it would help to form a connection with it. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on the amendment? I'm gonna go to, are you speaking on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Stephen from Fifty Central Street. Can you put the amendments up on the board so we can see them when you change that?
Did you guys do that? Did you put that language in for the amendment? So do you see it now? Where it's in the?
I can't see you, Jim. Never mind the board. I'm just asking for somebody else. So, you want me to continue?
Pardon me?
You want me to continue?
Yes.
So I think that the house, so we can keep it for Jack to be historical, we could buy it, use the space for affordable housing, go to CPC later and get the money to renovate the house so that it's livable for someone to move in there as affordable. Bring affordable count up so we're, you know, less susceptible to 40B. And we're gonna start giving stuff to the airport and not raising their rent. I mean, so if you have a hangar on that airport, then we don't collect the rent for those hangars. The people we rent the airport to for $53,000 a year collects the rent for that hangar. So every time we add something and give them something more to improve that input, we should be changing the rent. I mean, $1,000 a week for a $20 million airport? Give me a break. I mean, that sounds like a sweetheart deal to me. But anyway, I think a good thing to do is to keep the house, get CPC money to fix it so you can rent it out as affordable, and that's what I think. Thanks.
Any more discussion on the amendment?
Yes.
The house is, the house is in the article.
So-
The amendment is only changing the language from-
Open space, right.
Municipal, municipal uses to open space uses.
Yeah. Mr. Griffin suggested that the open space might mean they take the house down, so I just wanna be, make sure that that's not gonna mean that.
The, the affordable house is still in the article?
No, the historic house.
That's the, that's, the, the article calls for affordable housing and/or open space, I believe is the way that is phrased.
S- oh, maybe I'm confused, but Mr. Griffin suggested that the open space term would cause the historical house to be taken down, which is what was just-
That's not, that's not what the intent here is, I believe.
Okay.
Ms. Keith's art, it's Ms. Keith's amendment, so was, was that your, your intent?
If you save any time in my amendment file, excuse me, you could, you could strike open space and just do a affordable house.
Okay.
That's my first option.
Oh, uh, so now I think I'm more confused. I just wanna make sure that, as Mr. Griffin suggested, open space is not gonna mean that the historical house comes down, so whatever way there is to make that clear, perhaps it's just stating it for the record, I don't know.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Are you speaking on the amendment?
No.
No. So, we need to go and vote on the amendment. So, we have amended language on the floor. We're gonna vote for the amendment, so this is gonna be a majority vote on the amendment. It's a two-thirds major, two-thirds majority for the article, but it's, it's majority for an amended article. So, all those in favor of the amended language, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that the amendment passes. So, we are working with the amended article. Discussion on the article.
Fran Lonigan, Townway, um, I too have real concern about, um, the wording of the reuse as a propos, proposed heliport, and I did hear earlier that you said that that would be voted on unless plans came in and we, this would be on another, um, town meeting. Like, it's not, this is not saying that that's gonna be considered with this article.
So, the selectmen have signed a purchase and sale agreement with Equitable Development. The purchase and sale agreement is contingent upon a town meeting vote to authorize the acquisition of the property and the borrowing of the money. Equitable Development has agreed that they will withdraw their request, sell us the property, and the property will now, if passed, be either affordable or in open space purposes. And the lawsuit will be over, they'll get their money, and this property will be limited to those two uses.
Okay. So, the heliport, with that change of, of amendment, then the heliport is no longer even-
The, the town is not prop, I mean, the amendment here is to acquire for open space or affordable housing purposes or and/or, so that might mean that a portion of the site is open space and a portion of the site has an affordable unit or two, um, I, but, you know, that'll be determined. It'll have to be one of those two uses.
So-
No heliport.
No, absolutely no. Okay.
That's, that's what you're being asked to vote on.
All right. I just, it just sounds unclear because it does say here in the, and also, I just wanted to touch base too about the rent at the airport, um, it was-
That's, that's beyond the scope of the article, so-
No, I know, but it was brought up earlier to, tonight, that somebody brought it up saying it was around fifty-two thousand that I heard last night, but it was never clarified, and then he spoke again saying it was a thousand dollars a month, saying it is fifty-two thousand, or, um, is it, is the fifty-two thousand, was that all the money the airport gives the town?
It's, that, this is beyond the scope of the article. We're talking about buying a piece of property, we're not discussing the airport, so I, if you can give a real, I-
I, I, the only thing I'm saying-
So, the, the, the airport is leased to a company called Shoreline Aviation.
Right.
They pay rent to the town via its airport commission. They also employ two people, an airport manager and an assistant ma, manager, and pay for their, um, wages and their benefits. They also have maintenance responsibilities in connection with the airport, and they have obligations to make certain capital improvements to the airport. So, it is absolutely right to say that the rent that we received is fifty-two thousand dollars, but the airport does generate other revenue. The airport generates X size tax for sales for, of, of jet fuel-
Right.
Or air paint fuel, so there are other financial aspects to this arrangement.
So, so it's misleading to say the rent is that amount of money? That's all I'm saying, it seems like they're-
No, it's, it's accurate to say that that's the rent, but there are other-
But if, if it's because we're paying them to pay people, then that's not, that-
Well, there's a a, agreement, a written lease that's available, which says that they pay the rent that Mr. Lynch has made clear, what it is, but they also have other financial obligations to manage the airport on behalf of the town, so we don't have to employ in, uh, staff and things of that nature.
So, so that money, and I know we're not, I'm just, but so that money, I'm sorry, that money, fifty-two thousand, is also part of the money that they give the town to, to employ those people, so it's really not their rent, is all I'm saying. It's, it's misleading to say the fifty-two thousand is their rent when it's not, it's their expenses.
Again, that's beyond the scope of this article. We're not discussing the airport, we're discussing a purchase of a piece of property. I get why you've asked the question, but it's inappropriate to bring it up at this meeting.
Well, I started it with the heliport, sorry to be disrespectful, I'm not meaning to be-
The, the heliport thing-
The heliport, right, is now gone, but with, the reason I brought it up is because the heliport was mentioned, and that's an asset to the airport. The airport seems to get a lot of assets from the town, including land, that they make a lot of money on, and it doesn't seem like we're getting much back. That's it.
Yeah. Okay. Um, so we're discussing the main motion. Um, I did have an individual say she wanted to move the question. Um, I think we're premature right now, I, we need a little discussion on this, but I think we've, we've talked about this quite a bit, so we should, uh, wrap things up. Mr. Stewart?
Andrew Stewart, Building Commissioner, Highland Street, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. So, this, this property is separate from the airport. It's, um, so it's not yet part of the airport, so if we did purchase it, there would be an opportunity perhaps to make it part of the airport parcel, but it right now is a separate individual parcel. They have an active demolition permit to knock the house down. That has been approved by the Conservation Commission, and they have a building permit, and the Historical Commission already ruled that it had no historical significance and that they could demolish it. So, that's already happened. Now, if they don't demolish it, that starts the, the whole conversation all over again, and anybody that does wanna demolish it would have to go back to the Historical Commission and go through that process, which they may have a different determination based on a lot of the public feedback. Um, the other thing to note, that this property is in a flood zone, uh, so it's currently before the ZBA for a special permit to add several thousand yards of fill in order to create this, um, so, and that's also gotta go through the Conservation Commission as well. So, we have an opportunity here to, to not fill all this land, to not permit it before we purchase it, um, and instead, to save us from going through all the permitting and costing ourselves more money afterwards. Um, but it is in a flood zone, so any rehabilitation of that structure, the existing structure, will also fall under all the floodplain construction requirements for substantial improvement, and that any new building will also have to be elevated, um, on that, that property, so, uh, that's my comment. Thank you.
Okay.
Jacob Qualter, Oakleaf Drive, um, question about the heliport. Has an aviation study or been done at all? Like, is it even possible to build a heliport down there? Cause I've traveled down that street many times and it seems it's pretty close to a public roadway.
The applicant, the owner of the property, Equitable Development filed an application which was supported with civil engineer drawings, uh, that claims or purports to claim that they could locate a heliport there with enough room to store two helicopters and a hangar and have an office building as attached to the hangar. The process has been on hold since there's been an agreement. Uh, if the town does not agree to purchase the property, then that will restart and, yeah, the ZBA will study that and decide whether it's allowed or not. Um, so, it, the applicant and the owner are contending that they can by right locate a heliport on that property even though it's only one acre in size.
And that is private use helicopters, not a state police or something like that?
I, we don't know who the ultimate user is, but the plans show a, a landing pad for a helicopter, a two heliport, two helicopter hangar and an office building.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Magley?
Yeah, Priscilla Maglio, Arlington Street, um, I just, I don't know what's gonna happen with this, um, article, but the house looks very nice and it looks like a good place for somebody to live in affordable housing. If you think it would be worth spending that much money to have a couple of units of affordable housing, it might be a wise use of your money. Otherwise, I don't know. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Castro?
Cindy Castro, Ashburn, NAG, a co-chair with the Historical Commission. The Historical Commission did say this house has historical significance. Equitable, Equitable Development stopped working with the commission. Uh, we would of course love to have this house saved. Thank you.
Okay.
Joyce Strain, Marginal Street, it is my understanding, the way this article's written, that if we borrow this money, then the heliport is off the table and then the town doesn't deal with the heliport. Correct? So, can we move the question, please?
Correct. I'll take that motion. Sort of ran out of people speaking anyways, so. All right. So, this is gonna be a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 11, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that passes by two-thirds. The Selectmen move that the town vote to amend the Marshfield Town Code Division Two Personnel, Chapter 188 dash 11 by replacing the existing Schedule A Compensation Plan with the Schedule A Compensation Plan FY 2026 as printed under Article Three on the October 20th, 2025 Special Town Meeting Warrant, and this is being presented by the Selectmen. Pardon me? Yeah, you can do it.
So, um, in the absence of Mr. Moore, and what I'll tell you is that this is a article that proposes a two percent annual increase for the non-union employees that, uh, work in and about the town, and, um, that was consistent with what the town agreed to provide the union employees, so this is the adjustment to those schedules.
Advisory Board?
Vindalakar Holly Road, so as Attorney Galvin just said, the two percent is consistent with the, uh, labor contracts we've negotiated for our, now for our exempt employees in the town. Uh, if you're interested, the total funding is fifty-four thousand, twenty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents would be added to, uh, the pay schedule for Marshfield exempt employees. Uh, the Advisory Board unanimously recommends Article Three.
Okay. This is going to be a majority vote when we go to vote. Discussion from the floor, seeing none, I'll go to a vote. All those in favor of Article Four, please raise your hand. All those opposed. Article Four, or Article Three, I'm sorry. Article Three passes. In Article 32, the Board of Public Works moves that the town vote to appropriate the sum of seventy-five thousand for the purpose of maintenance of town-owned playgrounds to employ in compliance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30B, a licensed playground contractor to make necessary repairs and to meet this appropriation to transfer said sums from free cash, and further, that said sums being expended by the Superintendent of Public Works under the direction of the Board of Public Works. Mr. Patterson?
Mr. Moore, thank you. Um, the purpose of this article is to, uh, start a fund or some cash to put aside for the playgrounds that we never did in the past. In the last eleven years I've been here, we haven't done this. And whereas we put, uh, almost five hundred thousand dollars into these new play, uh, these playgrounds, rehabbing them, I think it would be a good idea to start, uh, putting some money aside to maintain them over the years as we go along. Now, this is something I wanna have put into the budget, the DPW budget going forward, but, uh, when we come up with this thought, it was after the, uh, FY 26 budget was already formed, so we're gonna try and do that for the FY 27 budget.
Okay. Advisory Board?
Don McLeer, Willstall Cemetery, wrote, "The Advisory Board recommends approval of this article, and I would simply repeat it. Mr. Patterson said we put all that money into buying and, and, the, the, on the playgrounds, it only makes sense to appropriate something to maintain them."
Okay, thank you. So, this is going to be a majority vote. Discussion from the floor.
Bonnie Owens, Old Main Street, uh, I have school-aged children and I have volunteered with the PTO at Ames Way School. Uh, several years ago, we had a nor'easter that ruined the, um, a piece of equipment there that was only about three or five years old, and we've had a number of, uh, tetherball and funnelball that have been broken, and it was, with the PTO, I got those items replaced through, um, insurance, and they've been sitting in the closet at PTO for several years with a lot of people going like this, saying, you know, it's not the custodian, it's not the DPW, nobody knows who to install it, so it's just sitting in a closet. I think having this fund in place would enable that equipment to finally be installed and have the broken stuff removed from the playground, uh, because we do have incidents of kids playing with the broken funnelball, dragging it across a playground, and I would rather see that stuff replaced. We already paid for it, it was paid for, uh, to be replaced through insurance, so let's just get it installed.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Kelly?
Eric Kelly, Peterson Path, is it possible, um, for this money to be in a separate account under the Playground Committee?
As Town Council points out, the article says it is by, spent by the Superintendent of Public Works and controlled by the Board of Public Works.
I see, I know what the article says, but what I'm asking is, is it possible to put it under the Playground Committee, under their control?
Uh, according to Town Council, that's beyond the scope of the article.
All right. We'll revisit this another time. Thank you.
Mr. Griffin?
Just a quick question. Why do we not use this from, um, the programs, the Recreation Department? Why is the seventy-five thousand in the future not come from the income from that account? Just my suggestion.
It's maintained by the Department of Public Works, it's not maintained by the, the Rec Department runs the programs, they do not maintain the playgrounds. If that's what you're referring to.
So, you can't use the funds for that then?
But they-
To repair, to repair. In other words, we had like four hundred thousand dollars in that account, I remember a few years ago, and you can't use that to fix playgrounds, but I, my suggestion was, why don't we look at that? That's my suggestion.
Okay. Ms. Pesavich?
Joe Pesavich, Willstall, yeah, along with the preceding speaker, I think my concern is along the same lines. Is this like a one-shot deal, or can, or is this part of making it, uh, making it an annual supplement or addition to the budget?
Mr. Patterson?
An addition to the budget. It's a one-shot deal.
This is an initial, this is the one-shot initial budget, you're gonna build it into the budget, that's the intention.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Lynch?
Stevenus 50, Central, so we're gonna appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars per year for maintenance of the playground?
Mr. Patterson?
Uh, it depends. I mean, we're starting, this is the first time we've done it, so I, I picked seventy-five thousand dollars because I know we s, uh, had the cost of the equipment to replace it. Um, going forward, it may change, it may be less, it may be more. I can't answer that right now, but we're gonna build it into the budget as we go into the FY 27.
So, does it cost us more or less to hire another employee than seventy-five thousand dollars? Why don't we just hire another guy whose job is just to maintain the playgrounds?
Because they're not certified.
Ms. Owens, call me up, I'll come down and install that stuff in the playground for you, for free.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, we're gonna go to a vote on Article 32, this is a majority vote. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? All opposed, I declare that that passes by majority. Thirty-three on deck. The Board of Public Works moves that the town vote to appropriate the sum of sixty-five thousand dollars to purchase in compliance with Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-B, a spare wastewater effluent pump and to meet this appropriation to transfer the sums, said sums from the town's wastewater enterprise retained earnings and further that the sums being expended by the Superintendent of Public Works under the general direction of the Board of Public Works. Mr. Patterson.
Mr. Moore, yeah. The purpose of this article is to have a spare effluent pump on the shelf in case one of the three die on us. It happened during a big storm, we lost two, we only have one operating and we're really like pulling, well, I don't have any hair anyways, but I was pulling the hair out of my head because I wasn't sure what was going to happen. And the biggest issue is it's thirty weeks lead time to try and get one of these pumps on the shelf, so we want to have one as a backup.
Okay. Advisory Board.
Advisory Board recommends approval of this article. Without this pump, there could be catastrophic consequences.
Okay. There's going to be a majority vote when we go to a vote. Any discussion from the floor? Seeing none, I'll go to a vote. All those in favor of Article thirty-three, please raise your hand. All those opposed. It's amazing how everybody agrees when it comes to effluent. And we're on to Article Three? Eight, I'm sorry. My eyes are getting blurry. Article eight. The Open Space Committee and the Community Preservation Committee move that the town vote upon the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-four B, the Community Preservation Act for open space and passive recreation purposes to appropriate the sum of nine-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars for construction costs related to improvements at twenty-one-sixty Ocean Street, parcel ID number GO eight dash oh-five dash oh-two, acquired with CPC funding in 2023, allowing for the expansion of South River Park onto said property and to make the necessary improvements to the existing South River Park at twenty-one forty-eight Ocean Street, allowing for the transition to the expansion site to be constructed in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA requirements for walkways and upgrading existing walkways to current ADA standards. And to meet this appropriation, transfer the sum of two-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty dollars and forty-one cents from CPC's open space reserves and the sum of seven-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents from the CPC undesignated fund reserves. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Open Space Committee and Community Preservation Committee.
Good evening. Dennis Kelleher, forty-nine Marsh Street Drive, Chair of the CPC. I bring our third and final article before you tonight. And before I turn it over to Susan Karen to give a brief overview of the project itself, I'll just remind Town Meeting that this has been an ongoing project that the town has supported thus far. Just to level set, again, if you're at McDonald's across the street, there's a Shell gas station to the left of that is the, the current South Shore Park. To the left of that is an unbillable, unsightable piece of property and, and that is what this, this park is going to be expanded to. Two years ago, October twenty-three, the town approved CPC funds to purchase the land, which we did. In December two thousand twenty-four, the Town Meeting approved funds to, to design this, and this final ask is for the production and development of the park itself. I will agree with some of the speakers yesterday when I was up here doing the other articles. These price tags are pretty significant. However, when we're building town projects because of the, the prevailing wages, the permitting requirements and just the scope, the price tags are high and we really can't compare it to kind of home improvement projects that sometimes some of us try to do. I can tell you with intent, the CPC has individuals on its committee whose day job is dissecting, building project plans, holding folks accountable to costs, questioning the, the costs themselves, both of those who, the applicants, but also the, the specialty, specialists that come in and present alongside with the applicants. So I feel very confident that the CPC, who voted unanimously for this project, brought forth a, a well-scoped-out project regardless of the, the price tag. But I'll turn it over to Susan to pitch the project.
Susan Karen, Open Space Committee. As you can see from the, the slide above it, it has the breakdown of the total cost. Included in the construction costs of this are the estimated, the construction costs are estimated using prevailing wages, which are required by law. Contributing to the cost for the dump, contributing to the cost for the park itself is the need for demolition and disposal of existing concrete foundation walls, a slab and a degraded driveway and walkways in the existing park that will be upgraded for ADA compliance. The bid in construction phase services are fifty-eight thousand two-hundred-and-eighty dollars. That includes professional design, engineering, environment, and environmental oversight of the project to ensure conformance with bid documents. Because the site is in a regulated area with soils containing coal ash, it's important to have the consultants document that the work is being done properly. The improvements to the new site will complete the South River Park and serve as the central feature of the South River Greenway, a planned future contiguous walking path along the river. The Greenway Project is intended to establish pedestrian access to a river trail connecting Main Street to the Willow Street entrance of the Pratt Farm Trail, as well as to the Bridle Trail and the Kebbell Footbridge. We'll work with planning, conservation, and the recreational trails committee to seek easements along the four remaining riverfront properties needed to complete this trail. The restored site not only benefits the environment, but will significantly improve the street view and the views from the lower park directly adjacent to the Veterans Honor Roll. The completed park will create a more respectful and inviting location that was ten, intended to honor Marshfield veterans. Park visitors, including veterans, their families and friends, have been asking for improvements to this area since the opening of the park in two thousand and twelve. We hope that we will finally be able to transform a blighted site to an asset for the community. If the funding is improved, we anticipate breaking ground in the spring of twenty-twenty-six and complete the project in the spring of twenty-twenty-seven with the installation of the final plantings.
Okay, thank you. Advisory Board.
Your advice, Don McElie, the advisory board recommends approval of this article. We have toured the property and this would allow the town to, and the residents to enjoy the town-owned land and in addition, as previously mentioned, the, an opportunity to appreciate the service that the veterans of this community have provided for our country. We urge you to support this article.
Okay, thank you. So we go to a vote on this, this is going to be a majority vote.
Steve Locatis, one eighty-four Elm Street. So this is the property next to the Shell Station, or the gas station on the corner, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so does this include any testing of the soil to make sure we're not acquiring a piece of property that could have, you know, problems related to the gas station that's right there?
Yes, actually, before we purchased the property in two thousand twenty-three, we had a full subsurface study done, a Phase Two, twenty-one E, they call it, and, and they, they did, they tested that. We were concerned about it being, you know, downgraded from a gas station. It was fully tested, they did soil borings and what they did detect was the coal ash and so that's what I recommended. So there'll be soil capping of that, but beyond that, there was fortunately nothing else.
Is there a bridge that crosses the river there?
No, it would be nice.
I wish they would do that. I've always thought that would be a great access to the opposite side and now you can have, I mean, now it's almost like, wow, can we do a, across the bridge, down to the next bridge that we're now about to do some construction and even come back some way, you know, or something like, but at least a walkway. I would, I'm in favor of this because I've always thought that these two, the Veterans Park, the, the little park that's next to it, just aren't enough. You know, there's not enough space to do much there and so this would be a great idea.
Ms. Pesavich.
Joe Pesavich, Wilson Road. Yeah, the subject that was just brought up was on my mind, was, was, was any remediation anticipated and, and estimated? And what, if it was, can you give me a rough idea of what it is as a portion of the budget?
Yes, the portion, so, yes, it's actually, I can tell you exactly what that is. It's part of the earthwork, so there is, the remediate, we have a soils management plan, we've had an LSP involved and we'll continue to have them involved. So we're doing the three-foot soil capping of clean fill with a geotextile layer. The cost of the geotextile layer is pretty high, I think that was sixty-two, sixty-two thousand dollars just for that. And then there's the added fill and the cost of that, which is pretty high as well.
Is that a clay?
No, no.
Clay, clay, clay cap?
No, no, it's a clean fill and then there'll be loam over that.
Clean fill, three foot.
Clean fill, three foot, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
I understand. Yeah, because talking to some of the old DPW old timers, there was a lot of other stuff that went on down there, but good luck with that.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Maglio.
Thank you. In your explanation of why we should vote for this, the last sentence was, restoring native plantings, upgrading landscaping, and removing invasive species will improve the ecological conditions for wildlife and improve stormwater quality and recharge by using low-impact design standards. What, what invasive species do you think you can remove?
There's a lot of invasive species. We had an environmental scientist review the, the site. There is, there's a, there's a, the majority, the big problem there right now is, is bittersweet. It grows up the trees and it's causing a lot of harm. It's all the way up to the canopy. Every tree on the site is in fact, is, you know, is impacted by it. We also have multiflora rosa, which is very invasive. These things crowd out native species. Multiflora, gilip mustard is one of the other ones, and then there was a few others, but those are the three dominant invasive species. So they'll be removed and whether or not they're treated beyond just physical removal, we'll have a plan to follow up with that.
Are there any phragmities in there?
No, there are not. That environment doesn't support phragmities.
That's what?
They're not in that, that part of the river, no.
That's good. I, I like this article, but I wish that the Veterans Memorial Park was being worked on. It seems like it's always going to be worked on, but there's no progress down there. Just to tell your committee, I don't know who's responsible for it, but it's a big mess. That's all.
Okay. Mr. Carrier.
Dave Carrier, thirty-four Outlook Road. Is there any intention to have a flag display for the various armed force services in this Veterans Park area?
That would be up to the veterans. We haven't heard any plans for that.
Well, the reason I'm asking that question, should that happen, okay, the veterans of World War II in the Merchant Marina, I will donate the peace in war flag to the display if the flags are going up. And as you may be aware, Senate Bill twenty-four ninety-eight is now in, been approved by both the House and the Senate and is in the Ways Committee and would have a requirement for such displays, but as I have told the veterans agents, anytime they need the flags for that purpose, I'm there.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. All right, we're going to go to a vote, there's no further discussion. So majority vote. All in favor of Article Eight, please raise your hand. All opposed, I declare that Article Eight passes with a majority. We are on to Article twenty-two. The Planning Board moves that the town vote to amend the Marshfield Town Code, Chapter Division Three Zoning Bylaw, Article Five Use Regulations, Chapters Three oh-five dash five-point-oh-four, Table of Use Regulations that's set forth in Article twenty-two of the October twentieth, twenty-twenty-five Special Town Meeting Warrant and further that the town clerk be authorized to make clerical, editorial, or other adjustments to effectuate the purposes hereof. Mr. Guimond.
Greg Guimond, Ice House Lane. This article modifies the current retail and service number six use by removing aircraft from the use category, combining motor vehicle sales with repairs. And it would remove these uses from the RB District, leave it as a permitted use in the B-two, and allow it in the B-three by special permit and by right in the industrial district. Planning Board voted five to zero in favor.
Okay. Advisory Board.
The advisory board voted unanimously to support this article.
So this, again, it's a planning article, it's going to be a two-thirds vote when we go to, actually go to a, Mr. Pamela.
Hi, Matt Pamela, two Missouri Street, Marshfield. I, I'm curious about the B-three business zone. I know we spoke yesterday. It's a very small zone in Marshfield, there's only one B-three, is that correct?
Two. Two.
Yeah, so the, the one that I'm interested in is down in Ocean Bluff and runs from the Coastal Gas Station down, halfway down the road, the numbered roads. That B-three has two auto shops in it, for lack of a better term. I was curious why that, that is going to be special permit and not just permissible use. I know those businesses have been there, one of them that I'm aware of is getting close to a hundred years that they've been doing that type of business in that property.
Mr. Guimond.
So currently, that's a prohibited use in the district. So we're making it a special permit versus prohibited. And that does allow the town to do review on the properties and to make sure that there's buffers for the residential properties surrounding it.
So I, I just understand, why, why special and not why, why not permitted?
Mr. Guimond.
Because that B-three district has been reduced. It now, the majority of it is now R-three. That was two town meetings or two years ago. There are residents in that area and unlike the business B-two district, which has, you know, the McDonald's and everything else in it and the gas stations, there are more residents that are butters.
So my, my concern, those businesses have been there longer than, I would say, the majority of those homes. So you're taking a business district and you're squeezing businesses out for residents? Is that the intent?
No. The intent is, first of all, those businesses are grandfathered, as we mentioned yesterday. Second, right now, they are prohibited. By making them special permit, we're being more persistent, permissive.
All right, thank you. Okay. Seeing no further discussion, go for a vote. Again, this is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article twenty-two, please raise your hand. All opposed, I declare that that passes by two-thirds. This is a citizen petition article. Dave Carrier moves Article thirty-five as set forth in the October twentieth, twenty-twenty-five Special Town Meeting Warrant to note that there was, the vote from the Select Board was three to zero in support. Mr. Carrier.
David Carrier, Outlook Road. Article thirty-five is basically changing a current practice when it comes to the unpaid private ways of grading them twice a year to up to four times a year as a part of a regular program arrangement, okay? And, you know, the funding was not established as part of this article and actually I was looking for a totally different vote than is what currently in the warrant, but that was denied as a request by Town Council, as I understood it from talking to our town moderator on last night. Right now, we do have seventy thousand dollars of funding established from the annual town meeting for this fiscal year, which covers two gradings. So we're really only talking about adding two gradings. And the intent of this meeting now is to defer this to the spring town meeting for the remaining two and establishing the funding. And the things I want to point out is that this is something that the Select Board, the Board of Public Works, the Advisory Board, and the Capital Budget Committee is something, you know, to me, this should be a pro forma type of thing because we know the people need it and we know they are paying significantly. it and we know they are paying significant tax funds to support. And I did a little quick update for the calculations I had done the past year. And actually, listing unpaid private ways on the following streets. A Street, Arlington, Arlington Road, Arlington Street, Bank Road, Brewster's Road, Bunny Lane, California Cove Street, E Street, Keene, Noel, Middle Street, Somerville, South Street, Tebrook, Baker's Lane, and Baker's Lane, Texas Street, Water Street. You know, when you look at that, the taxes paid by these residents, and this is from two years ago, was six hundred, I gotta make sure I get it right, sixty-four million, one hundred and five thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. And the real estate tax based on the tax rate at that time amounted to approximately eighty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars that was received by the town, which means that you're looking at nominally something in the neighborhood of seven to eight percent would be the seventy thousand additional dollars to fund this project, typically from free cash. One of the other things I want to point out is there are a number of locations, Bluefish Cove comes immediately to mind to me. The glasses are on my head because I've had a cataract surgery and short-term close reading is harder with the glasses on. They are paying sewer, water, and also solid waste fees. In addition to that, they have easements by Public Works on their private road for the purposes to maintain the sewer and the water systems, as well as if needed, grading for the purposes of the solid waste to be done. And I think of no reason why a portion, small piece it should be, from those funds couldn't also be used to help support the grading to some level in the future. It's lesser the case if you're not in the sewer system where you're just dealing with water. And in the history of the town, looking back, these people have paid a lot of funding into the enterprise divisions. They retained earnings over the long term. And in addition to that, that means that the more significant overcharges in the indirect charges have come out of their pockets. And, you know, that's one of those things that is not part of this article, but should get remediation as well. I would appreciate support for these people and this need. It has happened. They are our friends and citizens. And the streets I named, one in particular, Arlington, that street is private, but there are four unpaved roads on it. And there are a number of such situations in town where there are private paved ways where a small portion of them does have unpaved roadways still within it. And that's something where, you know, it's probably not gonna change simply because of the cost associated with it and the necessity of having assistance and cooperation from the adjacent neighbors who may or may not be willing to do that.
Okay. You had two-point-five seconds left. You didn't quite use up all your time. Advisory Board.
Vin Falacara, Holly Road. So if you, if you look at the article, and this is how I started my analysis, I see the word capital funding three times. Maybe it's in there more, but I saw it three times. So I, I kinda got the drift that the citizens' petition was seeking capital money to regrade private roads that are not paved. So the codifying the use of public funds to maintain private roadways throughout the town is, is a little troublesome to me. Because trying to, in IRS speak, capital funding has to improve something. So if we were looking to put tar on the road, improve the roads to make them paved and whatnot, that's a capital investment. Just grading a dirt road is not a capital investment. That's an O and M investment, an operational investment. So that's, that's my first problem with this article and the Advisory Board's first problem. Going, going on, as I understand it, the DPW has in the past maintained these private roadways only when absolutely required for public safety. Fire passage, police passage, emergency vehicles, things like that. Someone complains that there's a pothole of enormous size. The DPW has, has, you know, other, other duties is assigned, just found the, the time and the money to go and fill the potholes. And that's the way it's been. It hasn't, it shouldn't have been coming out of capital funds. That would have been illegal. Funding for this situation has in the past come out of the DPW's established operating budget. So based on, based on that, I couldn't get past it. And I advised the Advisory Board, and they accepted it unanimously, that we do not recommend the town adopt this article. The funding mechanism is not well-defined or is defined and is inappropriate. Thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to ask you, first of all, it's capital money because anything over thirty-five thousand is a requirement from the Capital Budget Committee. That is the term. It has always been that case. That goes back to when I was on the engineering staff in Public Works and when I was superintendent, as well as on the elected board. And we frequently have surveyed in the past, I can't speak for more recently, but I know when I was the superintendent, the town engineer and my DPW highway staff would let me know that when the roads were getting in a position where they needed to be graded. And grading them before they're really heavily pitted or damaged actually is more cost-efficient than doing it later.
Okay. This is a majority vote. So we're gonna go to discussion from the floor. I'm getting there. I'll call you when I'm ready.
Oh, I thought you were going to the vote.
So it's a majority vote. We get ready for a vote. Mr. Griffin.
I'm in favor of it, first of all, but it doesn't qualify for capital budget. Jack Griffin, Eighty-Nine B Street, Chair of the Capital Budget. And the reason being, it doesn't meet the five-year criteria. The second thing is that I would recommend to the town to relook at the streets again and accept them. Because every mile we get, we get reimbursed. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Woman at the right microphone.
Hi, Catherine Toby, Forty-One Water Street. I currently live in Bluefish Cove. And if you ever drive down that, the potholes are so large, it's often unpassable. It's dangerous for my son to ride his bike. It's dangerous for our residents who are trying to go up and down the road. After it's been done, it takes approximately two minutes for me to leave my house and get to the bus stop. When it's not done, it takes seven minutes. If you are in a situation where you live at the end of this area, if you're having a heart attack and my neighbor died this year, you're not gonna make it. So that seven minutes is life and death in this situation. I know it says private road. We have sewer, water, that's all town. Town comes down there to maintain those. So this is a road that is used by the town, not just the residents. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Gentlemen at the right microphone.
Sean Tople, Forty-One Water Street, Catherine's husband. We have lived there for about four or five years now. We've seen it go from kinda bad to really bad to get fixed to, and it depends. Sometimes, like you say, it's deed for two times a year, but we've seen it done where it's gone a whole year without being done. And whatever the reason, it doesn't get done. Road gets really, really bad. And that seven minutes is, I think that's sparing because it gets really bad. And in, been a Boston firefighter for twenty-three years. I know that rapid response changes a person. There can be somebody's life or death experience. So having a fixed road or having these roads fixed is, should be considered, considered, you know, it's a, it's a life safety hazard. So I would appreciate it if you looked at it that way.
Okay.
Susan Karastier, I'm in the Cove as well on E Street. I've been there for actually almost fourteen years. The roads this past year was the worst I've ever seen them. They're not even potholes anymore. They're craters. Catherine said seven minutes. I say close to ten. I'm a retired nurse, forty-two years. I've worked in the ER. Time is of the essence. Somebody has a cardiac arrest, a stroke, you're talking four minutes for brain cells to start to die. CPR, sure, that can prolong things. But that ambulance takes seven minutes? Or they, or axle breaks because they're going down the road and they hit, or they in the ditch on Cove Street? How much time is that? It's a lot of time. I think whether the criteria or whether wherever the money's gonna come from, the capital funds, whatever, the town needs to figure it out. These roads need to be done more than twice a year. They say up to four? Yes. Sometimes maybe, sometimes not. But they need, we need to be heard and looked at because this is an issue for life, like Sean said. Thank you.
Okay. Lady at the microphone.
Hi, Kimberly Musto, Thirty-One Water Street. I actually had to call the fire department last winter at five oh four in the morning. My whole house alarms were going off. And if it was the day before, they wouldn't have been able to get down my street because the plows will not come down our street to plow it because it wrecks their trucks. So they leave us with an unplowed street. I'm just very thankful that it was the next day after they send the big tractor to plow the one path that they plowed down our street. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you.
John Gonnland, Twenty-Seven Cove Street. I would just love to make two points. Mr. Falacara mentioned the word absolutely necessary, right? Waiting till it's absolutely necessary is too late for all these reasons they just said. I, I'd like to reiterate Mr. Carrier's point. It makes more sense to have funding and a mechanism in place to maintain these roads before it is absolutely necessary. Thank you.
I don't know if you wanna respond to that. Mr. Patterson, since you're up there.
Yes, I would, Mr. Moderator. I'm the DPW Superintendent Sean Patterson, and I do support this article. The only question I had, and I think it's why it's being put off to the spring, you can vote on it tonight, I presume, is the funding mechanism. I don't wanna take from another department to fund this. I wanna make sure there's a funding mechanism in place that we can use to do this additional work. And again, myself, my colleagues in the Board of Public Works are in favor of this article. I live on a private road as well. And I believe and I feel that people, it doesn't matter which street they live on, they're entitled to services. And when it comes down to emergency services, nothing stands in the way of that. We gotta figure out a way to do this. And again, I'm in support of it. And if we do get the additional funding for the materials that we need and the resources that we're gonna need to continue, I do support this.
Just to clarify a point. Excuse me. Okay. Just to clarify a point on this. One of the citizens' petitions, the citizens write these articles themselves, and sometimes they can have flaws in them. And in this particular one, there's no request for funding. You need to actually ask how much funding do you want and where is it coming from to be able to get an appropriation. So there's no appropriation in this article. That's something that can be addressed in the spring. This article can still be voted on, but just understand, there's no funding that goes with this article at this particular time.
And one thing I would like to point out about it, with the spring town special meeting prior to the annual town meeting, funding is available that would then be there for two additional gradings for that period of the year. And then combining that in with a funding established within the annual town meeting warrant, you know, we go forward and things are done. And one thing I would point out is, this particular article is not dissimilar from the prior one that Sean had for the two hundred thousand dollars for repairs to pave private ways. And there is a large inventory of paved private ways still waiting to be accepted. DPW is working on that now. People on these unpaid private ways, you know, certainly shouldn't be jumping out to do paving because then they're gonna be on the tail end of all of the access to be accepted. Secondly, they are going to have substantial work that has to be done for drainage, as well as, you know, the meeting number criteria for a paved road.
You're getting beyond the scope of this article and discussing other things that are happening from a department which Sean would like to address, so.
If I may. So one of the things I forgot to mention is, in order for us to do work on a road that's not accepted, you folks at town meeting have to vote on that, okay? And fund the department so we can do the work. That's a necessity. That's under Mass General Law. That wasn't in place at the time, but I think if you vote on it tonight, we can work on that in the spring. But we do do the roads twice a year, once in the spring and once in the fall. So we have a fall, we're gonna go out in the fall and start doing the grading of the roads again. And when it comes to Bluefish Cove, we have to work with the tide. That's a lot of issues sometimes with the water coming in. We have gone out there and done it more than twice, and we will continue to do so. But thank you.
Okay. Gentlemen at the left microphone.
Chris Capone, Eighteen E Street. I just wanna make a couple points. It's called a private road, but it's a private road with full public access, no restrictions. That means everyone in this room, everyone in the town, has the same rights and privileges to use the road the same way you would use Caswell Street or Ocean Street or any other street. So there are no restrictions on that private way, on the private road. And someone mentioned capital improvements for the money to be put up, it would have to be paved. This road goes through a mosh, and it's never gonna be paved. The... Conservation is never gonna allow anything to be paved over there because the runoff would be going into the, into the mosh. So as far as capital improvement goes in paving, it's just never gonna happen. But I just wanted to make that clear that there are no restrictions on this road. It is a public, it is a private road, but it has full public access for everyone. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mira Moscato, Cove Street. Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Sean, for all your comments for guiding, moving this forward. We're all in support of that at Bluefish Cove, as you know. I am a retired healthcare executive recently, and my job was to look at safety for the past four, four decades of my life. And this is a safety issue at Bluefish Cove area particularly. I, I'm fortunate, I live at the beginning of the street, so I have fewer potholes for my car to travel. But the bad news is, at the beginning of the street, I have seen all the recent near misses of children on bikes, women with carriages and their children, scooters. It's a, it's a risk for our children and for those who do live at the end of the street. I have seen the UPS trucks barely go over these potholes as the kids are riding their bikes. There will be an incident if we don't continue to invest in keeping these roads safe. So I just ask folks to move this forward, vote with us tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf.
Michael Wolf, Union Street. Mr. Moderator, we've had discussion about what was in the warrant for tonight and what's gonna be done in the spring. And I find it confusing. What are we voting on this evening with this article?
It's, it's more like a resolution because it's directing future examination. There's no funding source that goes with this article, so there's no way that the DPW can't gain some funding so they can put somebody out in the road tomorrow to be able to, to do this work. But this would be something that can be brought up in the future in the, in the April town meeting and have a funding mechanism attached to it and have the DPW look at this and then come up with a plan on how they plan to do it.
So we would be voting to accept the language that's published?
In the warrant.
In the warrant. And it is an expression of intent to increase the maintenance of private ways. Is that a fair?
That, that would be a fair assessment.
Okay. In that case, I move the question.
I accept your motion. Okay, so I've got a motion to move the question. I believe we are all ready to vote on this at this point. So all those, and this is a majority vote because it's a petition article, all those in favor of Article Thirty-five, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that Article Thirty-five passes. We're on to Article Twenty-seven. I thank you. And on behalf of Steve Concos, also. Article Twenty-seven, the Board of Assessors moves that the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Five, Clause Twenty-two J, which authorizes an annual increase in... increase in the amount of the exemption granted under General Law's Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22, Clause 22A, Clause 22B, Clause 22C, and Clause 22E, and Clause 22F, by 100% of the, by 100% of the personal exemption amount, subject to the conditions in Clause 22J, to be effective for applicable exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1, 2026. And that is by the Board of Assessors.
Elaine Fiori, Assistant Assessor. I'll make this easy. This article increases the disabled veterans' real estate tax exemptions from $400 to $800, and $1,000 to $2,000, effective the next fiscal year, July 1, 2026.
Thank you. Advisory Board.
The Advisory Board, Jan Martin, Preston Terrace. The Advisory Board voted unanimously to approve this increase in the tax exemption for our disabled veterans.
Okay, thank you. So this is a majority vote. Seeing no discussion from the floor, I'm going to go to a vote. All in favor of Article 27, please raise your hand. All opposed. I declare that Article 27 passes. So we're onto Article 37. Pamela Keith moves Article 37 is set forth in the October 20, 2025, special town meeting warrants. This is again a citizen petition. The vote of the Select Board was zero to three in opposition. Ms. Keith.
Making a mess. I had a handout I was maybe going to read, but I've decided against that, so I'm just going to wing it. This article that I've brought forward is to create a general bylaw. If you read the opening, the intent, the purpose of the bylaw is to establish a framework for proper passive park land uses based on existing laws, history, and votes, on which the town's executive and administrative body shall rely when creating more detailed policies for the use of the town's passive parks, public passive parks. I do have a amendment I'd like to make in a couple of places here, since I know Attorney Galvin had some concerns, and it would, the First Amendment would help, but I will talk about those later. The point of this, this is to create a general bylaw is to emphasize that parks are highly protected, and mostly by Article 97, that we, that Article 97 is part of the Massachusetts Constitution. It's an amendment to the Constitution, and that public access and public purposes are highly protected, and that is what a park is for. Use policies should be, should be in alignment with the public's rights to use parks. And this is similar to making a statement and emphasizing Article 97, and how important public, the protecting of public parks is. This is similar to the Right to Farm bylaw that makes the same type of assertion, that we have the right, under Article 97, to have public access to a park and have that park remain protected as it is under the current laws. This particular, the next part of the bylaw, the bylaw is about passive parks in general, but also about Harbor Park. Harbor Park was voted at town meeting to be a passive park. And we spent money with community preservation money. Similarly, South River Park was also voted as a passive park with community preservation money. That park has a conservation restriction on it because according to the community preservation law, that is required when you purchase the land. Harbor Park was not purchased with community preservation money, but was rebuilt and voted as a passive park. And we need to abide by that law in the same way that the conservation restriction on South River Park protects open public access, free public access, and restricts activities there on South River Park. The activities are restricted to things that are passive. So I left plenty of room in this bylaw. When it comes to Harbor Park, there were some policies that were thinking of, that were being possibly created, that were maybe going to be voted on by the Select Board, that were creating a situation where the park would be rented for private, in private companies or individuals to rent and even conduct business on the park. And I thought that it was going too far. It was, you're closing out the public in some places, even if you allow the public in while these things are going on. That is not passive recreation, and it's not public access the way it's intended under all of the laws that would govern a park. So I left room for, the last two sections in the bylaw about reservations and special event permits, that's the part. We do not have a special event policy yet, and so I left room for things that aren't strictly passive recreation, things like community events. And the reservation section is actually meant to pretty much just write what is going on now. It seems that people can have small wedding parties or other small events, and they do maybe contact the harbor master or the Select Board. We don't even really have a strict policy there either. But these people will reserve maybe part of the park for a wedding or something. And there's no real fee, there's no rental or anything like that. So the policy part of it is really what's going on already right now, or is meant to guide the Select Board to kind of draw, draw the line on keeping it towards public access.
Okay.
And I do, I do have a couple of amendments. I don't know, of course, if it's going to fail, there's no need to do them.
Let's get an opinion from the Advisory Board first.
Finn Falacara, Holly Road. So there, there aren't many people in, in the town of Marshfield who would spend their time to write something as, as in-depth, and so my credit to Ms. Keith here. Very impressive. That being said, the proposed bylaw invokes many additional regulatory requirements to be adopted by the town, including significant regulations that are to govern one particular town park, as she said, Harbor Park. This unbalanced treatment of our public spaces may introduce, we don't know, unintended consequences that cannot be seen in advance. We feel that sufficient checks and balances currently exist within the public meeting format that governs Select Board. The Select Board has the, the privilege of approving these, the use of public parks for private use currently. While the Advisory Board acknowledges the effort put forth by the petitioner, the Board recommends that the residents of town meeting disapprove the article as unneeded at this point in time.
Okay.
Can I respond, or?
Well, you're going to respond anyways because you got to tell me what you want for amendments, but.
Well, the amendments aren't important. I realize now, based on what he just said, that I probably should have read my handout, because my handout is more of a legal, somewhat of a legal argument that states I am not creating any new regulations or laws here, other than stating that the Select Board should, you know, make a, or may make a special event policy. There is nothing in here. It's almost all basically statement, if you read it. It's the statement that we have the right, it's a statement of the laws. It's, there is nothing here that directs the selectmen to do anything new, or that creates any, anything outside of the state laws that already exists. There's already a lot of layers of protections. It's emphasizing the protections of the law.
Okay. So what are, what are your amendments?
My amendments were, the one thing, I know Mr. Galvin, when he spoke with you, he made some mention of public lands, and that this might conflict with the state law, that we couldn't change the public land. This is only about uses on the land. I'm not trying to hold the park forever as a park. It is supposed to be forever as a park, but there is this way to undo that. It's very complicated. I wanted to get rid of the language. It's in the opening legislative intent, where I state, "The purpose of the bylaw is to preserve," and then I state, "the town's dedicated public passive park lands." I'd like to get rid of that phrase. "The town's dedicated public passive park lands." I'm not trying to preserve the land. I'm trying to preserve the uses that we are entitled to.
Where, where is this?
It's up right above where, there's, for some reason, the number 41 is there.
What, what section are you talking about in your article?
The number 41 on that page, for whatever reason.
On, I'm looking at your article.
I know. I'm looking at the screen.
And I don't see a number 41.
I do.
Oh, it's 41. Page 41. Okay, page 41. And where on that page?
The purposes of this bylaw is to preserve the town's, get rid of dedicated public passive parklands.
To get rid of?
And, in the word "and," dedicated public passive parklands, and.
You're striking that sentence?
Not the whole sentence. Get rid of, dedicated.
Public passive parklands.
Yeah, dedicated public passive parklands, and. Get rid of those four, five words. Yeah, and, get rid of the "and."
Then it doesn't read correctly.
No, it does. It will say, "The purpose of the bylaw is to preserve the town's..." No, it's, hold on. All right. Do that. Now back up. Get rid of the, the town, the towns also. Yeah. All right. Now it reads, "The purpose of the bylaw is to preserve the general public's constitutional right to these special spaces."
Okay, so you're striking that language as your First Amendment.
Yeah. And the other amendment I-
We can have two amendments on the floor at the same time. So that was, that will be our First Amendment.
And the second one is to add into the last section, into, into the special event permit section. Where is it? After A, at the end of A, at the end of the word "park," to just write, it's nine, nine words, "large wedding ceremonies may be allowed by this permit." And that's to cover where I, I did not, I, I ended up making a section about smaller gatherings, and did not allow for weddings, which are things that do happen on this park.
So those are your two amendments?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to have discussion on the amendments. So... It's, it's on the screen. So we're having discussion on the First Amendment, which is striking that language at the beginning. Is any comment, any discussion on the amendment?
Steve Lynch, 50 Central Street. So the Second Amendment, I'm definitely on board.
I'm talking about the First Amendment only.
Okay, so the First Amendment, it's really just an explanation, rather than creating a regulation or a bylaw. It's an explanation.
She's striking, the amendment, she's striking language out of that first section.
Right.
That's what we're discussing.
I understand that. So I'm just saying, by, but that sentence is about an explanation, really, right? Is that right, Pam?
The, the reason why I'm striking it is because I did see Attorney Galvin talk about the fact that there are, there is law about public parklands, or public lands, period, and that you can change the use of them. My point in this bylaw is to keep the use to what it's intended, which is passive recreation. We voted that. You can change the use significantly or get rid of a park, but it's a very difficult process that involves the state legislature and multiple votes in town, and all kinds of analysis and all that. I am not trying to preserve the land. I'm not trying to conflict by saying we will always 100% protect the park land. I'm trying to protect the use of the park.
But the sentence starts out, "The purpose of this bylaw," right?
Don't argue with me. The, no, I'm only joking.
This, this, the discussion goes through me, please.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
It's, that section does start, "The purpose of the bylaw," in the very end.
So that sentence isn't even making a direction. Isn't making a rule or not making a rule. It's explaining the bylaw. So I don't think, I think we could just leave it in. It doesn't hurt anything.
No.
Okay, but it's here, it's there, so.
Okay. I'm just saying, we could leave it in. In the Second Amendment, I'm not on board with.
We're discussing the First Amendment.
Okay, so I'll reject.
Mr. Darcy.
Mr. Moderator, Steve Darcy, Temple Road. You know, I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done to the article, and I'm not sure that we can-
We're, we're discussing amendments.
Yes, yes, I know. I, you know, I think this amendment, I don't think it's something that we could workshop on the floor of town meetings. So my question for you, proceed, really, is, at this point, can a motion be made to move the question?
I think it's premature.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the amendments?
Eric Kelly, P. Anderson, P. At. In regards to the amendment, the purpose of this bylaw is to preserve the general public's constitutional rights to access and enjoy many of these special spaces. Would it be, if the Select Board would have put together a, a usage plan in regards to private uses for the park, but the whole thing is that you still have access to it, I mean, would this-
You're not discussing the amendment. The amendment is striking the language.
I, I am. The whole thing is that, would this amendment not allow us to use the public, you know, if we put together a public use policy?
The, the amendment strikes language, "Dedicated public passive parklands." That's what the amendment is.
Right.
So it's just striking that language. It's not changing anything else other than that. That's what we're first voting on, is the amendment. And then you can get into the discussion of the bigger ramifications of what this article is about.
Well, that's what I'm wondering with this amendment. Is it going to have, if the Select Board wanted to put forward a usage policy, is this amendment going to impact in any way?
That would be...
Can I just explain that the amendment took language out?
The Select Board putting-
Excuse me. I'm sorry.
The Select Board putting together some policy is a whole nother topic. That's, that's a whole different thing.
I think, I think-
It doesn't fall within the, within the confines of this article that she's proposing. You're, you're suggesting a remedy to things which is beyond the scope of this article.
I don't think I'm citizen's remedy, because I think this came up because of the possibility of the Select Board putting forward a usage policy for the park, so.
Well, then, then this, then you're, essentially, what I believe Ms. Keith is trying to do is create that usage policy. And if you, if the Select Board were to create a usage policy, then she could withdraw this article in lieu of you creating that policy. And that's a whole different discussion. We're discussing the amendment of this first section of the article. So we've got to resolve the amendment part of things. So I'm ready to go to a vote on the amendment.
Yes. I'm going to talk about the amendment.
What do you have to say in the amendment?
Oh, nothing, just except that, that this, this section is-
Then, then, then we're done. I need to vote on this amendment.
No, I do have something to say.
This is getting to be very confusing, and I don't like it when it gets confusing because people will do things not understanding what they're doing. And this, so what we want to do is get this as amended article.
Right. I'm in favor of the amendment because this is called the intent paragraph.
Okay.
It's so very basic. It just calls attention- It just calls attention to our Massachusetts Constitution, which guarantees every human has the right to, you know, clean air and clean water and access to these lands. That's just part of the intent. There's no big change here.
So I'm gonna go to a vote on the first amendment. All those in favor of the first amendment, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that the amendment passes. So we're going to the second amendment, which is the one in section one twenty-eight, special event permits, adding the language, "Large wedding ceremonies may be allowed by permit." By what? By this permit. Okay, so that's the language in the second amendment. Any discussion on the second amendment?
Point of order, Mr. Moderator?
Yeah. Where are you?
What is large?
Not small.
The paragraph before just defines small events, so this would be outside of the small events.
Thank you.
Ms. Lynch.
So Steve Lynch, Fifty Central Street. So I live right near this park, and Rexham Beach is right up the street from me. And this is one of our most important resources the town of Osford has. And we pay dearly in our property taxes to be able to utilize, to utilize these resources. Now, I have no problem with people having wedding ceremonies at Harbor Park. What I have a problem with is if they're gonna have a reception there and serve alcohol.
This says ceremony, not reception.
Okay, so, all right.
That's very specific. Okay, no further discussion. So on the second amendment, adding that language, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that that amendment passes. So we now have a doubly amended article. If it's to move the question, no. Not too early. So we're gonna go to discussion on the amended article, I guess you can go ahead. Ms. Jordan, you're first.
Diane Jordan, Bancroft Street. It's, it's mostly about Harbor Park, but I guess it could be about any park or beach. Yeah, so there's, there's wedding ceremonies there, there's, we'll just use Harbor Park as an example. There's wedding ceremonies, there's cookouts, there's, well, other types of events, right? So people just call the harbor master's office, and they check the calendar for the date that they want. I've done it a couple times. It's very easy. And then they can make a donation, or not. And then they have an event, like one of those events, and they enjoy the park. And anybody who's walking by can come and enjoy the event with them. They can watch the wedding, they can grab a burger, they get invited in. It's very communal. So I really appreciate Pam's efforts on this to tighten up, I guess, the definition so that potentially, I guess, it's not being rented out and it's keeping those nice uses from happening. But I think it definitely needs work, but I think she already realizes that, so. Is that correct, or?
No.
No, oh, no. Am I wrong? Was I totally wrong just that? I'm sorry, I'm tired.
Ms. Keith?
Well, well, now, I'm not totally clear on what you said. You seem to kind of be going in one direction and then maybe veered off at the end, but this is not to limit at all-
No, I know that.
Some community type events. This is to limit, this is to keep any events of either those types in nature, you were talking about, cookouts, families, weddings, but also, but then to limit commercial events, commercialization, monetization of the park, and renting out to private events that are closed to the public. The event should be open to the public.
Right.
If you look at the conservation restriction on South River Park, it states that it's public access there. And, you know, we, any, any event here should be open to the public, like we usually use this town green. You'll see that it's public events, public, the public is free to come in and free to go. So I'm trying to steer it so that it's creating a framework. It's not really mandating a lot. It's creating a framework where the selectmen have to maintain that, but those are already existing laws. We voted passive recreation here. It's already existing, it's already restricted, this park, is what it is. So I'm trying to codify that fact. We are already restricted there. And to do anything too much outside of those restrictions is not correct.
Mr. Moderator, I, we agree one hundred percent. I think she just didn't understand what I was saying. I was talking about all those events and how they're always open. People can come in and join if they're walking by. Nobody's ever excluded out of anybody's wedding or cookout or anything like that at Harbor Park. I thought the intention of this article was just to kind of make the language really clear so that continues to happen, and that's what my comment was. And then I thanked Pam for her efforts.
Okay. Town council would like to make a statement on his own as well, so I'm gonna turn over to the town council first, then we'll go back to the floor.
I too appreciate the effort to try to reinforce the open space and passive recreational use nature of all the parks. That being said, what has been described and what's written is two different things. There's provisions of this bylaw that are imprecise and subjective. There is no constitutional right to access. We have many lands that are open space lands that we don't allow public access to. I'm concerned that the bylaw conflicts with the provisions of the Public Lands Protection Act, which is the codification of Article ninety-seven of the Constitution. I'm concerned that the language impacts the executive authority of the select board to decide what uses can be made of public property, which is something that the select would have an express right to decide. I'm concerned, and was concerned until I heard the explanation that apparently large weddings, which I don't know what that means, would be precluded. I know that the Harbor Park has been used for other events such as the Jaws movie. There's more than thirty people that attend that. Those are all gonna be impacted by this. I think there are way too many unintended consequences from a bylaw that's not precise. This should be, in my opinion, sent back to the drawing board, which if the selectmen approve, I'll be happy to assist in creating, but it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of a hot mess.
Okay.
Can I reply?
Yes.
I would like to say again, I already addressed the public lands, the public lands that he says that this somehow conflicts with. There is no conflict whatsoever. Public lands, if a, if a select board wants to get rid of this park or change its use significantly, they have to vote. Town meeting has to vote. You have to do some type of analysis. You have to go to the EEA at the state level. You have to then create a bill at town meeting to go to the state legislature. All of that can be done. There's nothing in here that stops that, so that's not true. As far as something like the Jaws movie, I clearly state, under a special event policy, if the selectmen have one, that those events that are open to the public are all fine. Every type of event open to the public is fine. And I included even things where people do make money. Craft fairs, plant sales, the farmer's market type of events. Anything open to the public is fine. And so I'm not, is just not conflicting with that. The only thing I'm trying to stop is the renting to private companies, individuals, businesses to use the park for their own business purpose and to do events down there that would make the public feel uncomfortable and would hinder public access.
Okay.
So my response would be, if that's all we're trying to do, why don't we just say that?
I did. I did say.
There are several paragraphs here that say lots of things that I honestly can't understand how it will work.
Okay. Mr. Lynch, you're up next. Mr. Lynch. I write down when everybody gets up, and I take everybody in order, so this isn't really just random.
Steve Lynch, Fifty Central Street. So, listen. Movies down the park, opioid benefits, wedding ceremonies, cookouts, pub, you know, public events for the town of Osford, people to enjoy the park, the beach, great. Private companies coming in and renting out beautiful resources so that they can make a profit having parties for corporate parties, for their summer parties, selling alcohol, out of the question. I don't want it in my backyard, okay? Call me a nimby, I don't care. I don't want it at our beach either. There's, there's no reason, we don't have a revenue problem. What we have is this body has a spending problem. And so to be renting out those great resources for profit is ridiculous. There's no need for it. This will help do it. We shouldn't be selling alcohol on public property either. Thank you.
Ms. Riley.
Thank you. Tricia Riley, one seventy Whitford Circle. I got up to the microphone before Attorney Galvin started speaking, so I have to, you know, much of what I say is, might be a little duplicative, but I do agree, these are a lot of words that go way beyond what I think Ms. Keith is trying to do. And I think a lot of people would be in favor, in general, of what she is trying to do, but this is far too convoluted as written, and it just has to be worked on. So I, I think this article should be voted down and maybe be brought back in the spring once it's tweaked a little.
Okay.
Grayson Pelletier, ten fifty Caswell Street. Motion to table the amend, not the amendment, the article for a further date.
I couldn't hear you. Could you spin a little closer to the microphone?
Motion to table the article.
Motion to indefinitely postpone the article. That's would be the proper word. All right. I'm not, I need to refer to town council on that, because. Hey, that's, that's a legal motion. I don't know that I've actually ever fielded that motion.
Point of order, is that, is that also applied to public petitions, citizen petitions?
We're, I'm still working this out.
Thank you.
I'm still, so a citizen's petition, can you do that? The town council says that that's a viable motion. So I'll accept that motion. We have a motion on the floor to indefinitely postpone the article, which I'm assuming would mean that this would come back with a little bit of tweaking along the way, perhaps, for next spring, but it's a legal motion, and I accept the motion, so we'll vote on the motion to table. All those in favor of tabling this article, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that that motion passes. So we're gonna table this article.
So I'm tabled. Does that mean I have to be, that I should be bringing it back in, in April, or, or it can be?
I, I think, I think everybody agrees that this is a good article, that the intent is a good intent.
I'm just saying, then it's still mine, or can it be somebody else's?
No, it'd be still yours. I don't see why it couldn't be yours. Just, it's indefinitely postponed, that doesn't mean that you have to bring it back up in April. It means that you could.
I can talk about it later.
But I don't think anybody here doesn't like the intent. I think the question is all on the execution, and just getting a little bit of work done on that would be useful.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next article is thirty-six. So it's, it's ten o'clock, just to let everybody know where we're at. We have Article thirty-six and thirty-four still left to do. There are three planning articles, which are sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, which are being, they're being passed over, so they're being indefinitely postponed. And I think right now, just for purposes, I'm gonna go recognize Articles sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, and recognize that the planning board is passing over those articles. They're gonna be indefinitely postponed. I will declare that those articles are being tabled. They're being indefinitely postponed until some future date, perhaps. So we have Article thirty-six, which is a citizen's petition again. It is ten o'clock, so we have two to finish. We're gonna finish both of those tonight, come hell or high water. So you can decide how high you need to pull your boots up when we get into these. So Article thirty-six is a petition article from Diane Jordan. She moves Article thirty-six as set forth in the October twentieth, twenty twenty-five special town meeting warrant. The select board voted on this, one to two opposed. Ms. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So the first thing I need to do is strike the, amend those words out, because it's where it's striked on the board, on the screen. Select Board Approved Twelve C License Caters, and then the word "either." Those are being amended out.
We will come back to that.
Oh, okay.
We will come back to the amended language after it's on the floor. Right now, this is not on the floor.
Oh.
So you need to present your article. We'll get an opinion from the advisory board, and then we will strike that language. Right now, your article doesn't exist, because we're just bringing it up. You need to present your article.
Okay, so this article, Mr. Moderator, is to, for two things, to fix the language in our current alcohol beverages bylaw, because it's wrong. And then also to limit the special one-day liquor license that the select board is entitled to give for, on public land, for only nonprofits, charitable events, and community events, and excluding for-profit and corporate, private, and private events.
Advisory board.
Hold on. All right, so when you look at this article, and probably not obvious unless you've really put some thought into it, you have, the existing bylaw is the first paragraph, the two sub-paragraphs, letter Alpha and Bravo, and then the two last paragraphs. I believe Ms. Ms. Jordan's amendment, or article, is that sentence buried in there that says, "No commercial events or activities shall be eligible for a special license under this section." Is that correct, ma'am?
I'm sorry, what, was the confusion, what's your question?
So I'm trying to find out, what are you modifying? Because the existing law is, is all that stuff, and then what you're adding is, "No commercial events or activities shall be eligible for a special license under this section." I think that's the sentence you added.
No.
So I, I guess I need to know, understand.
I, yeah, I did watch the advisory board meeting, and you, you, it was pretty unclear that you, you guys didn't understand it, so I'm sorry, but I think it will be made clear if I just continue, so. Is it required that they give an opinion if they're confused about their opinion? Can they just say they don't know?
We get opinions from the advisory board, so yes, it's typical.
Okay, well.
So, all right. So Diane and I spoke about this for about an hour on the phone, maybe it was forty minutes, but a decent amount. The existing law, the existing bylaw requires the select board to provide authorization for private events subject to public hearings. So they currently have, we currently have a bylaw that requires people who wanna have a public event at a public park to come to the select board and ask for it, and the select board has public hearings, you know, hearings in front of the public where they, they make those decisions. The situation provides sufficient checks and balances of select board decisions to maintain the necessary consideration of the public interest in the, the opinion of the advisory board. So adoption of this article would limit the select board's authority and forbid issuing special permits which allow alcohol consumption on town property for commercial and for-profit events. So we, we would be taking that, you know, authority away from them. As such, you know, we elect these people to make decisions for the town, and the advisory board feels that this article is unnecessary. We already have the checks and balances within the select board process to do that with, in a thoughtful manner. So the advisory board unanimously voted to disapprove this article.
Can I reply to that without it coming off my minutes? Mr. Moderator.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, uh, this is an alcohol licensing bylaw. This is not a private party use, but, so, I'm, I'm really sorry if it got confusing between the land use bylaw and mine, but this is, this is, uh...
I, I don't think that they're...
Section one eight oh, this is our alcohol beverages bylaw. We have this in our bylaws.
I, I believe, if I can just kind of go in between quickly. The Advisory Board's position is not that they don't understand it, it's that they don't feel it's necessary, because we already have the Select Board being the authorizing authority.
That's correct.
And that's, that's, the Select Board currently has the ability to, to control the alcohol licenses. And this is restricting the Select Board's ability to decide what they wanna do with the licenses. That's, that's what, and this, this really is what you're doing, but that's what the Advisory Board's position is, is that we already have a check and balance, and, and you're limiting that.
So, I'm confused that, um, because, so what I'm trying to do here is change the alcohol bylaw, not...
Right, but you're changing it to limit the Selectman's ability, the Select Board's ability to, I understand what you're doing, what your intent is. I'm just saying, I'm just translating from the Advisory Board to you, is, they, they get what you're doing, it limits what the Select Board can then do. You're limiting their authority by changing the bylaw.
Maybe we can just let me explain?
Sure.
And then it is what it is.
But you already, yeah, just, quickly, yes.
Oh, okay, well, quickly, well, the quickest way to explain the current alcohol bylaw is that it's not legal. That's the quickest way to explain it. There was an amendment made on the floor at town meeting in December that added the language, that's Select Board Approved Twelve C License Caterers for either. And that add, that added language, the, um, now I'm nervous.
But we're gonna amend that and take that language out. Right, that's your amendment, is to remove that.
Okay, that, my bylaw takes that language out, but our current bylaw has that language in. That's why I'm taking it out.
Right, yes, so, we needed to do your amendment, which is to take that language. That's what your article is trying to do, is to remove that language. So, you wanna remove that line that, "Or Select Board Approved Twelve C License Caterers," and remove that, correct?
So, that ended up on the written thing, right? Because that's the way I got it from the, um, town clerk, because the bylaw had not yet been approved from the Attorney General, so I had to use what was voted on at town meeting, and the town clerk had that copy. So, that's why it had to be on my sheet, and that's why it has to be up there. But that is not, that Select Board Approved Twelve Three C License Caterers piece, that is not, I didn't want that in my bylaw that I'm creating. But it had to be on there, because that's the only record that we had.
Okay.
If I can...
This is the whole thing when you get a citizen's petition. You have an idea in your head of what you wanna do, and you've gotta present that, and then what I try to do in conjunction with Town Council is to come up with a way to make it have, have it make sense to people, so they know what they're voting on.
I can make it make sense, if I can explain, but maybe Town Council can.
So, I think what you're asking to do, if I understand it correctly, is you're looking to delete the words "or Select Board Approved Twelve C License Caterers," because you don't think that's legal, and then you're looking to limit the Select Board's authority to issue one-day licenses for two types of events. One, a certified fundraising event hosted by a nonprofit or charitable organization, and on, and on, and then, or a public event organized by, primarily for fostering community fellowship, specific engagement, and add a limitation, "No commercial events or activities shall be eligible for a special license under this section." So, you're looking to limit the types of events that the Select Board can approve to those two types of events, and reaffirm that no commercial events can be eligible for such a license.
Yes, so, essentially, so if I can just explain what happened with the alcohol licensing bylaw, I think people would understand, okay? Prior to last December, okay, Marshfield's, um, alcohol beverages bylaw was Mass. General Law, um, one eight oh, one eight zero dash one zero, okay? Which is no drinking in public, period, anywhere, okay? That's Mass. General Law. That's what Marshfield had for an alcohol bylaw forever, okay? And then, there was a series of events where the Select Board had applicants for, there was a caterer who wanted to rent the beach and have a party, okay? And they denied that, because they agreed that they didn't want parties, private parties on the beach with alcohol, um, on the public beach where the public was, keeping the public off the beach. So, it kind of, we're all rolled into the whole public, um, the, the public, the request to have a private event on the beach got rolling on the whole alcohol bylaw question, okay? Because our alcohol bylaw, can you put up the slide, the next slide? Our alcohol, this was our alcohol bylaw forever, okay? But the Select Board had a policy where they would, um, grant special one-day alcohol, wine and beer beverages, um, licenses, special one-day licenses to, of community events, fundraisers, like the North River Arts Festival. That had just been a long practice that the Select Board had been doing, okay? But under the, the bylaw that we had, that was not allowed. So, this came up in the Select Board meetings last summer, and Attorney Galvin was questioned by the Select Board, and he said, "There's no exceptions to this, this bylaw," which was our bylaw, okay, prior to December seventeenth last year. So, this led to a conversation with the public, uh, people were getting upset about that. So, in December, town meeting, the Select Board went to town meeting to change the bylaw. This bylaw to, could you switch it to the next one? Their intent, no. Yeah, okay, so you can, now I'm lost. So, right here, Article seven, okay, so this is the Select Board's bylaw last December, okay? Which is the, um, and, uh, Mass. General Law one three eight, um, fourteen, it's, I think it's supposed to be, or it was. So, that's Mass. General Law that says there's no public drinking unless the Select Board gives a special one-day license for fundraisers and community events. So, there's, there's a difference in the bylaws, but then that got a floor amendment by a catering company that added the twelve C license onto it. Twelve C licensed caterers only cater private events, for-profit events. So, the twelve C license does not belong on this bylaw. It's not, they're not a legal match, so that's the first problem. The current language that we have on our alcohol bylaw is not legal, essentially, because twelve C licensed caterers can't go on that license, that bylaw. They can't be together. But then that led to the whole land use, renting of Harbor Park and the beaches for private events with the same catering company that the Select Board then started working on this summer, which people lost their minds over. And that's why Pam had her article. So, I am trying to, first of all, make our alcohol beverages bylaw legal, in the way that the Select Board was intending to do it last December, so that they can still give a license for North River Arts Festival and those things, and take out the language that's not a legal match, because you can't have a twelve C licensed caterer serving all alcoholic beverages on public land.
So, your proposed language here that's in the warrant is what you're proposing is a revised bylaw?
Yes.
With the exception that you want to amend the statement to take out the part that says, "Or Select Board Approved Twelve C Licensed Caterers."
Yes, and then I added the, just some clarifying language on there that is just, is just a reflection of Mass. General Law one three eight dash fourteen.
Okay, I think I, I think I have it at this point.
Well, it's...
So...
It's on the next page, or it's on my page. It's, it's on my, can I have your thing?
So, we have, we have two changes, and this is what we're discussing. What, what her article does is it makes two changes. The first is striking that language that says, "Or Select Board Approved Twelve C Licensed Caterers." So, that's your first language change.
Yes.
And the second language change is to add that section that's A, B, and the bottom line that says, "No commercial events or activities shall be eligible for a special license under this section." So, you're adding that section in.
Yes, because...
Okay, that's, I got it. We don't need to talk about it anymore. So, we have two amendments, we have two amendments to our bylaw, and the two amendments, and this is probably the best way was to show them, is to, to that bylaw, we're gonna take out the section that says, "Select Board Approved Twelve C Licensed Caterers for either." And then, I'm not sure about the four, whether that's gonna come out as well.
Well, the four goes with the one and two, so...
Four either should be there, that strike through the either is not correct.
It is correct.
And, well, let me get through, before you do point of order, I've gotta figure out what I'm doing. And then, I, Items one and two, and the, no commercial event should be highlighted as well.
The warrant, they're A and B, but there it's one and two.
Yeah. And the warrant says A and B, but there it says one and two. One and two, and the line that says, "No commercial events or activities shall be eligible for a special license under this section." If you can highlight that in red. And don't strike the either. Does that make sense? I'm talking to the IT guys.
Oh, sorry.
That's what I told them, just, hold on. Do you guys know about highlighting the language I just said? It says where, you've got the stuff that's struck right now in bold. Don't strike out or bold the either at the end of that line. Are we getting there?
Yeah, we just have to switch screens.
When we get done with this, we're gonna be voting on two amendments to the town bylaw, and then we'll vote on the amended bylaw. There was a point of order. Somebody yelled...
Oh.
In.
No?
Yes? Thank you. And below that, number, the whole line from number one, all of number one, all of number two, and the line that says, "No commercial events" below it, all in red. Okay, so those are the two changes to our current bylaw, which is what you're trying to do, I believe. You're adding, you're striking that first language, and you're adding what's in red.
Yes.
Okay. So, that's what we're voting on. So, discussion on the First Amendment. I think we're good, let's not confuse it anymore. Discussion on the First Amendment.
Okay, so, I believe that the bylaw was legal as it was, this, this article was legal as it was written, because all it does is, is make, it doesn't take away the Select Board's power, all it does is make them have to act within the scope of what this says, which before, we didn't have alcohol anywhere in town, except on leased-out town property, like, um, North River, Webster Street, so forth. But anyway, so, does Bob think this makes it legal by doing this, in his opinion, even though I have my own opinion?
Just make this all legal?
I think the proposal is legal, it can be voted.
Yes, legal and votable.
Okay.
Okay, so... On the amendment?
The second.
Second one, okay, so we're gonna vote on the First Amendment. All in favor of the First Amendment, which is the one in black, where we're striking Select Board Approved Two C Licensed Caterers. All in favor? All opposed, this is a majority vote. I declare that that passes. So, we're on to the Second Amendment.
Bonnie Owens' Old Main Street. I just wonder, um, about the part where, "No commercial events or activities shall be eligible." I wonder how many commercial activities are applied for?
I think this was inspired because a caterer wanted to start doing parties on Rexon Beach. That was what got this going, so...
And the Select Board can just say no to that?
They could, they, they could have said no to that, yes, but this is, just means that it can't even come up.
Okay, so, not necessary, 'cause the Select Board can just say no?
Correct. Any further discussion on the Second Amendment?
I, I have on, I have comments on, I don't know if I can...
Same question to Bob. Same question, does this, does this make it legal, in your opinion, by adding this?
I think the, I think the bylaw can limit, be, the, the Selectman's authority could be limited by this, yes.
So, you're saying it's legal?
I, I, I think it's a potentially permissible amendment.
Okay, thanks.
Unless you wanna talk about the amendment, we're voting on the amendment.
So, the...
Here's, here's what we're doing. We just voted for the First Amendment. The two things you're doing to revise the bylaw are striking that first language, the stuff in black.
Right.
And then we're adding the lines that are in red. So, that's really what fundamentally you're looking to do.
Right, I would like to discuss that. Can I?
Uh, we don't have the sec, we're discussing the Second Amendment at this point.
Yes.
Because we're gonna, unless you have discussion on the amendment?
I do, before it goes to a vote, because I wanted to answer the, um, last residence.
Okay.
So, the Select Board can just say no, um, and the previous Select Board did say no. But the new Select Board is working on a policy to rent out the beaches and the parks, or at least, last conversation I had with, um, one member of the Select Board, which was a very nice conversation, but it, it clearly was, it clearly stated their intention, they're working on this po, policy to rent the space on the beach, rent space at the parks, to house private events where the public would be excluded. So, that's why the lang, and, and those events would be for-profit, for the private entities that rented them. So, that's why I wanted to speak on this, this amendment, because the, the resident stated this, like, Board can just say no, but not if they're not going to say no, not if they, they're going to rent out beaches and parks, that means they're not going to say no. So, that's the whole purpose of that amendment, so...
Okay. All right, so we're gonna go vote on the Second Amendment, and again, this is a majority vote, all in favor of the Second Amendment, all opposed. I declare that the Second Amendment passes, so now we have amended language for this bylaw, and I think at this point in time, we're just gonna go to a vote for this new amended language. All in favor of Article thirty-six, which is the revised alcohol beverage bylaw. Raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that that passes by a majority. I declare that that passes by a majority.
Oh, so I'm done.
You're done.
Thank you.
So we have one, one article left. I did, I said, I called again, said that we were passing them over. So Article 34 is a DPW article, and since this is the last article, it gives us a chance to say thank you to Sean, who is retiring after this town meeting, well, not immediately, but...
Thank you.
This is his last town meeting, his last article.
And you picked the last article for the last, for me?
And you're amending the heck out of it.
Yes, I am.
So, so this is an article to, to acquire some vehicles. Sean and I talked about this earlier, there's some issues in getting the vehicles that he selected, so we're cutting this article about in half. I'm actually going to, and I think, I'm going to read the, the motion on the main article. I'm going to immediately go into this amended article. I have a copy of it, I'm just going to tell you what the new numbers are as we go through, and then Sean can explain what the story is. Article 34, "The Board of Public Works rules that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $227,000 for the purchase of a new Chevy K-2500 pickup truck or equivalent, and a Chevy K-3500 or equivalent small dump truck for the wastewater division of the Department of Public Works. The sum of $440,000 for the purchase of three new Chevy K-2500 or equivalent pickup trucks, and one new Chevy 6500 or equivalent dump truck for the water division of the Department of Public Works. And the sum of $133,000 for the purchase of a new Chevrolet K-1500 or equivalent pickup truck, and one new Chevrolet Tahoe or equivalent SUV as administrative vehicles so the DPW staff procured in compliance with Mass. General Law 30B. And to meet this appropriation, transfer the sum of $227,000 from the town's wastewater enterprise retained earnings, the sum of $440,000 from the water, town's water enterprise retained earnings, and the sum of $99,750 being from the town's solid waste, wastewater, and water enterprise funds, and the sum of $33,250 from free cash. And further, that all these sums, all said sums expended on the, by the Superintendent of Public Works under the general direction of the Board of Public Works." So that's what's the motion. Did you give this to IT? Can we put up the amended?
That's it.
And a charge of extra for all the colored ink. So, now that the official motion is put it on the floor, the sum of $227 at the beginning is changed to $100,000, because he struck the K-3500 or equivalent small dump truck for the wastewater division. The sum of $440,000 is reduced to $200,000 for the purchase of two new Chevrolet K-2500 and equivalent pickup trucks, and he struck the Chevrolet 6500 or equivalent dump truck for the water division. He struck the sum of $138,000 for the administrative staff, and the $227,000, and the, the numbers have changed from where the money was coming from. So $100,000 is coming from wastewater enterprise, $200,000 from water enterprise, and that takes care of the expenses. Correct? We got that one right?
You are correct.
You're on, you're on the stage here.
So we, we sat down and decided what we needed and what we really, what we wanted. We went with the needs for the rest of this year, and we'll address the other issues in the spring. The needs are that a few of the vehicles did not pass inspection, one was totaled in an accident. Thank God the, the person was okay. But we decided this is what we need to get through the winter with plowing situations, emergency calls, and so forth. So we scaled it back, and we'll address the other issues in the spring.
Okay. Advisory Board.
I apologize, Christopher Harrow. We, we met on this, we knew there was going to be an amendment, so we didn't vote, we haven't had time to get back together, but we supported the, the vehicles that were totaled and couldn't get expect, inspected. But since this has been amended, we didn't vote.
Okay. The Selectman, our Select Board did vote, and they were unanimously in support of the amended language. So, you were up first.
Bill for Oakleaf, 564 Summer Street. Are these purchased off the state's list of vehicles?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Ledge?
Steve Lynch, 50 Central Street. So the ones that were totaled, is the insurance company paying for them?
Mr. Patterson?
There was one vehicle that was totaled, we got about $12,000 and change, it went into the special account. And I, I don't know the name of that account, maybe the folks behind me do. But the money is in there, it's about $12,000 for that vehicle.
And what year was that? And how many miles were on it?
It was a 2015, and I don't know what the miles on, were on it. I've got that with me.
And, and what type of truck was it that was totaled?
Pickup truck.
Just a regular F-150?
No, it was a Chevrolet 2500.
2500, okay. Well, first off, this article shouldn't even be here. This is not an emergency. This is, this should be in the annual budget at the spring town meeting. We keep doing this all the time. You know, we need to have some sort of process that we're going to obey, and that, and it's not bringing articles like this here. It, it's a continual process. We might as well stop calling this special town meeting. I mean, it's, we just do it all the time, and that's not what this meet, special town meeting is for. And, and the other vehicles we're replacing, do you know the mileage on them?
Mr. Patterson?
The Capitol Committee has all the pictures and the details on the vehicles. I sent the pool.
I'm not the Capitol Committee, I'm a resident asking you, how many miles are on the trucks?
I don't know, Steve. I don't know, I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, well, let me just say this. Everybody in this room cares about their children more than anything else in this world, right? My daughter drives a car that has 197,000 miles on it. It couldn't get a sticker. I fixed it so it could. I put four brand-new Michelin radials on it, brand-new brakes, and a couple of new ball joints, and she's driving it, I made it safe within our budget. You just, we just spend money this ridiculously. You don't even know how many miles on the trucks we're replacing.
Gentlemen, the right microphone.
Jacob Walter, Oakleaf Drive. Kind of agree with Mr. Lynch's point here. With the trucks that weren't totaled, what was the, or the truck that wasn't totaled, was that due to lack in preventative maintenance of why they couldn't pass inspection?
No, they were rusty, and they were about 12 to 13 years old.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Griffin?
Jack Griffin, Chairman of the Capitol Budget. Sean is actually right, he sent us pictures on all the vehicles that were involved. Sean also reduced the cost by about $140,000, dropping the two administrative cars, vehicles, and, I've lost my train of thought, give me a second here. He had not had cars in the last two years, because I think you were in some kind of program, and you might want to explain that a little bit, this. And also, the trucks will have plows on them, so that we need them for the wintertime, and that's why we voted four to one to approve the Capitol Budget.
Okay.
Mr. Marauder, if you want to elaborate on that, what Mr. Griffin was talking about...
You would like to, sure.
Sure. What he was talking about was we were entering a lease program a few years back, and it didn't come to fruition. So we're behind the times, I get into a few vehicles, we, this is the first time in three years we've asked, and I know it's not the right time, but I do feel it's necessary.
Okay. Ms. Jordan?
Diane Jordan, Bancroft Street. I just want to point out that if Mr. Griffin says Sean's right, we should spend money on trucks, it's probably a good indicator. It's because it just doesn't usually happen, that's, I'm just making a joke, sorry, everybody's tired.
All right, thank you. So this is going to be a majority vote. So I'm just going to call, vote on Article 34. All those in favor of Article 34, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I declare that Article 34 passes with majority. And at just 10:35, we have done all the articles for the special town meeting. Thank you all for showing up. I'll take a move to adjourn. Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming up and taking part in town meeting.